Recall this meeting of the Rundle Planning Board to order on its March 28, 2019. It's 7:03 a.m. We are in the MLAs school Spanish Room.
Oh, you got the camera. I got it.
We have the approval of the agenda, public comment, approval of the minutes. Pending applications, we have three: a Rundle machine, a plenary site review, determination of completeness. Item number two is a driveway access site plan review. Item number three is Raymond Aker's resubdivision of an approved subdivision. Then we have some land use ordinance revisions to look at. We're looking at changing the 30-day rule to pre-regularly scheduled meetings for an extension. And then some scheduled public hearings for land use ordinance changes. We'll have the planners' report and an update on the joint zoning with the conflict. Let's start with the roll call.
Make a motion to approve the rule.
Now, let's have the board first to do the roll call and we'll approve the agenda.
Again, Marty.
Bob Ginn.
Susan Roj.
Jamie Lyman.
Ron Jamorin.
Rich Ginnholm.
Jens Berg.
To the chair?
Yes, sir.
Request amendment to the agenda. Also include amendment to the R2 district boundary incorporating existing subdivision in the R2 district.
Okay.
The hidden meadows, as we discussed.
You all understand that?
Do you hear?
There's a, we need to amend the boundaries of the R2. There is a subdivision that overlaps, hidden meadows overlaps into the BI. And it's supposed to be in the R2. It just never got fixed on the maps. So we need to have that discussion. So we'll add that.
Is that Old Post Road?
No.
No.
Mountain Road.
Mountain Road.
Oh, okay.
The one that goes into the back side.
Yep.
We all move that we approve the agenda as amended with that addition?
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the agenda. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. The next section is public comment. If there's anybody here that wants to comment on anything related to the land use ordinance or the planning board that is not on the covered agenda, this is the chance if, when you have an opportunity to speak. Nobody? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and we'll move on to the approval of minutes for March 21st. I hope you've all had a chance to review that.
Yeah.
I have a question.
Is this the roll call?
Yeah, well.
March 21st.
We're going on the 21st.
I do, I'm just wondering.
14.
14.
Two sets of minutes.
Oh, that's right. We had that. We had that public hearing.
We're going to turn it off.
Try my best to get it.
I would suggest we start with 14.
We'll do the 14 then first.
But I'll move we approve as ready.
Motion has been made to approve. Is there a second?
Yeah.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous?
I abstain.
With two, three extensions. So the four of us that were here approved it.
Yes.
Yep.
Susan Roger and Jens.
I was gonna say, eventually figure out the third.
Okay, so on to March 21st.
Okay, so I have a question on page three. Two, there's two motions listed there. First one we withdrew, that's all correct. But the next one, I'm gonna call it differently. I'm sorry, I might have made the most, but that's more about that the board recommends that the amendment not be adopted. I don't think we went that far. I think we just.
No, we didn't. We just forwarded it without a recommendation.
So, and then below that, below item two, it does seem to say what I think might be, yeah, there's another motion halfway down. Motion amendment, post amendment to land use ordinance. And to that one, that all seems to be what I recall. That disappeared. Later they, it's probably based on something.
Yeah, I think the, I think the first motion, Mr. Moran proposed that the, the motion that proposed amendments to the street design and construction ordinance be forwarded for the board of selectmen with planning board recommendation that the amendment's not be adopted. I don't believe that's correct.
I think I made that motion.
But, well, there was a motion that was made.
Yeah, but we were.
The motion was made and then it was withdrawn and it was changed to no recommendation.
That's.
Okay, Todd did those, 'cause I don't care.
And you said not adopt. So that's why. We discussed that. Right. And then we agree with what the, at least my motion. Didn't matter, we still were in town. Wasn't to get, get in the way of the, how low. It's just that's the way the motion works, but if you want to change that, you can change it. Well, but then, you touched on all this, and we did get it right halfway down. Mr. McGinn motioned that the proposed amendment to land use ordinance, item number two, be forwarded to the board of selectmen without the planning board recommendation for adoption. That's what I recall.
Well, I remember the discussion revolved around the fact of whether or not we could send it to them without any recommendation.
Yeah, correct.
Right. And that, and that was the way we did voting for those. There's no recommendation at all. We're just gonna send them up and let the board of selectmen do it, the board of selectmen go to them.
Yeah. So you wanted it all changed to no recommendation. Is that right?
Yes.
Change the motion, the one that says.
Just without a recommendation.
Right.
Way. No recommendation.
Yeah.
The only thing I saw. That's over there, did that sound right to you? Okay, so I'll make a motion that, with that, or change that correction.
Correct. Is there a second?
Yeah.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the minutes as corrected. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I abstain, I don't care.
Susan's abstaining, Jamie's abstaining.
Right.
And Jens is abstaining. And then there are four in favor. And now, pending application. A Rundle machine, a plenary site plan review application, determination of completeness, on proposal to construct a 22,163 square foot expansion to the existing manufacturing facility located on a 7.76 acre parcel, tax map 12 lot 73, located at 20 Technology Drive in the BI district with associated parking inside improvements. In addition, a Rundle machine also proposes to construct a new 11,200 square foot manufacturing facility on the adjacent 3.75 acre parcel, tax map 12 lot 72, with associated parking site improvements and interconnectivity with circulation parking facilities on lot 73. DCB Properties is the owner applicant and Paul Gavoy P.E. is the authorized agent. We did a sidewalk.
Correct.
Did you guys have anything that you want to convey concerning the sidewalk?
No, as far as I can see, it all.
There were several questions, there were several questions that in turn up was going to be resolved, possibly the idea of being close to Route 1 or different ideas of buffering.
Right, we can discuss buffering.
Yeah.
And we had talked about the lights. I don't know what, what's gonna happen with either one of them. Those were the two main things that I remember.
Yeah, I think first of all, the buffering, I'm proposing to put up 29, Admiral Green, I guess, Alba Bodies, double space by the center, to kind of buff that area, the parking area, which was, was kind of thin in there, 'cause that exists in the old, old open up site. So I figure if he gets guy around the corner and come back towards the post-subject area, that'll buffer the parking area, front of the line. Again, I forget the building myself has crushed over in this area, which looks quite nicely.
Yes.
You know, it's industrial property. We're gonna do the same thing along the building here, just do some crushed over to the pavement and the building. And so right now, that's all we're really reporting. The landscaping is 029, 1229 trees, they're gonna be about five foot tall. They grow up to about 12 feet and four feet wide roughly. So I thought that would be a pretty good buffer. That's, I said, but something else I'd be glad to do today, it's a better, buck free type of property. But that's what we're reporting right now.
How many deer do you have out there?
Say it again.
How many deer do you have out there? You see them from time to time.
Why do they bite in the winter?
Do they eat them?
Oh, it's dinner. They're too much.
They eat anything that's green. It depends on the winter, it depends on the winter.
Yeah, I don't know if there's that much, I don't remember.
But you got enough.
I don't know.
I mean, you're, you're back where you are now, you might see them. But you have them closer to the road, which will probably be more deterrent. I mean, we also mentioned two about, are you gonna put a, lift them up a little bit? So there's a berm there? I mean, I'm just asking.
Yeah, I don't think we really need to. They're gonna be five feet of stock, they go up to 12 feet. I think that's gonna be a pretty good buffer to begin with. So brimming it, I don't think it's a real necessity. But.
The board thinks it is a necessity, I don't see that.
No, you might have.
I mean, it probably rises up, you know.
What I'm saying is, between your excavation and everything else, you might have enough loom right there to.
I don't think a little of them will make the, break the project either way, so.
No, I'm just throwing it out.
I don't think a berm necessary, so I'm not proposing one.
How do they stand up to salt given the proximity of Route 1, Paul?
Yeah, that I couldn't tell you, but you know, we're, here's Route, you guys are travel away right here. So you know, it was still quite a ways back, I don't think, you know, the salt will affect them, but I think Todd would probably weigh in that, I don't think we're that close to Route 1.
Do you have a plan, Paul, to, you have a plan that you can go with?
A plan of the, right? You can have this one when I leave. I'd rather have something like a four. I'll vote for you. I can take it off.
You didn't knock that on the phone cord?
Yeah.
So Marcel paid for the phone cord?
He doesn't get that. So yeah, I can just take it off. And I can come see if you want to talk about landscaping, but that's pretty much the area that I think we should be buffering.
Now, you had a question, how close is the pavement to the property line?
Um, I had that discussion last week and that was.
Probably, probably better than fine, but secondhand.
Um, it's 37 feet, for the parking lot. 37 feet is the actual parking space of this little second, that's by 732. And buffering's 25 feet is pretty much required. So to the turnaround, that little back of those things, that's 25, that's 37 is the actual parking spot.
One thing we didn't cover, the sidewalk, are there any facilities in these buildings that are gonna have to hook up those septic system?
They're gonna have a measurement bed. Yes.
Is there a leach bed or?
Yeah, both leach beds right here already been designed. And some bed right here.
And what are your LG systems on the other side?
The LG system's gonna be right in this area right here, just so I can maintain further distance I could from the property line, the nitrate studies. So just a smaller system.
Yes, that bill seems, seemed to do a pretty good job, giving us a bunch of information to look at for you. And I think it's gonna go fine as long as other environmental.
Behind my red head, it's like.
You know, if the sun comes up in the east, it might have an impact.
Right.
And I know you, what about, what about the lights? We had, we had discussed that.
We did.
And I didn't know if you would, if anything had been done at that point.
Um.
Not nothing that makes a lot of difference to us, it's just might impact you, middle of your parking lot.
I think, you know, that was a good point that you made, I'm gonna talk to Marcel about that, Todd wasn't there to me, but I think we have, you know, same type of lights on the building here as we have here, same height, same type of sheer lights, that I think you might be right, we may just put kind of a little pole seat here, and not have to put any in the middle of the parking lot. That would save myself some money and so, you know, we will talk about that and certainly have that revised in the next emissions. But right now, it's the light plane that Jim came up with, so I'll talk to him also. Let me see what his things are and myself's gonna see what works.
But also too, remember we discussed that, if, turn out, if you have anything in the parking lot itself, turn out to get more obstacles for your, your tractor trailers for turning, swinging and everything else.
Yeah, the way they're positioned right now, they won't affect it, 'cause they're kind of right down the middle of, you know.
Right, that's.
But, you know, certainly, I will talk to Jim about that.
I don't think it really needs it.
And see if they find it or not, if we're gonna have to stay.
I, myself, I don't think it needs it.
I don't know if it affects the plan at all for as far as we're concerned.
Yeah, so I like say, Jim's the expert, so I'm talking to him.
Okay.
And so in front of you, you see the, you have the Amicore, the engineer's came back with the approval.
I saw that.
Basically, the only two conditions, you know, they want us to pay the money.
No.
And the other condition is you can't clear any trees until June 1st and July 31st. Because the bats maybe sees something.
It's attacking what it is, so.
Those are the two conditions, can't clear any tree until June 1st and July 31st, and we have to pay the fee.
Okay.
DEP did get back, did get back to us this week saying he's kind of a little bit behind with some other projects, been shooting back, you know, varieties, what he said, right?
Did you call already submitted?
Oh, yeah, that was submitted 60 days ago now.
So it's submitted and accepted as complete, their review, that kind of.
Yeah, we have some feedback, we've responded to, like, from the solid waste and from the geologists, so pretty much handled all those issues. So, trust me, that's it.
Does anyone on the board have any other questions for the applicant? No. No? No? Need a motion to deem the application complete?
I deem it complete.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded to deem the application complete. Any other discussion?
I need a motion to do a public hearing.
Okay. After we deem it complete.
We just did, right?
No, we haven't voted on yet. Oh. All those in favor of deeming the application?
I was gonna ask a quick question.
Yes, okay.
Any outstanding waivers or anything?
I don't have the application right. I just need to go with landscape one, 'cause I haven't seen it from out. As I also need to, you guys are gonna have to also make in your motion that you're going to make this subject to DEP approval, because your ordinance says that you cannot deem it until the state board permits or issue. And since DEP is an outstanding authority, you have to say that we will do this subject to the receipt of DEP approval.
Yeah, if needed.
Seconded, Jens?
I'm on it.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded to deem this complete subject to DEP approval. Any other discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It is unanimous? The next step is public hearing.
Make a motion for a public hearing two weeks from tonight.
I don't think we can get it advertised in time.
Yes, we can.
Can we?
All right.
I thought we needed 14 days.
No, we need 10.
We need 10. Which means it has to be published on Monday?
They're not open on Mondays, right? Isn't that a problem?
That's a problem.
They don't open on Mondays anymore.
Yeah.
Yeah, but tomorrow they are.
Yeah, they want three days. That's the issue.
Three days for publication?
Three days to get it ready for publication, that's our standard.
Okay.
Which is why we was at 14 days. For 10 days. But I can put it in. If we can't do it, then you're gonna have to move it to the next meeting.
When is this?
I'll find out, I'll find out.
Is it later than?
Four days, three hours on that.
Yeah.
Four days, three hours.
It's 22.
Ted, maybe just wait a week? You're gonna go out there and tap.
Publish something, they deserve it. I know, I talked to Greg about that, but he's still.
Can't get it in, you don't think on Monday they vote, if you turn it on Tuesday, there's not enough space in that paper?
Yeah.
You're not gonna end it. You don't have so much space, don't do it.
Next DPC is the 11th, and after that it would be the 25th.
I think Greg does it because Greg still has to do it for public hearing, this is a state, I believe it's a state law, he doesn't publish his regular meetings, he used to publish all.
Yeah, so kind of just, it's had any more newspaper out of that.
He's got a bill, he's got some sponsoring to go, will be sponsoring to go to, and make newspaper publishing for anything.
I don't know, because of that.
So are we shooting for?
11.
Are we shooting for the 11th?
Shooting for the 11th, Thursday, Thursday the 11th, 7:00 P.M.
Yeah.
We need a second to Marty's motion.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded to have a public hearing on April 11th at 7:00 P.M. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous. Thank you. Congratulations. Next item, driveway access, site plan review.
Oh, I was gonna take that. Phone work.
Dad is lying.
No, it's a shootout.
Request for a permit for, after the fact, driveway access road constructed on 31 acre parcel, tax map 12 lot 7, located at 2209 Fulton Road, in the VI, SO and SP districts. Mario, Benette, Richard, Kate, I'll be the owners and applicants. You may have not remembered, we're gonna site walk on September.
No, it's October. We're gonna October. You had a meeting on September 27th. And the applicant wasn't here, but then you said you were out. You had a site walk on the 11th of October and discussed the issue of the, and at that time, I, in my understanding, and Mario can direct me from all, that you asked for some costs of what cost to do, what that was done, and the applicant's provided that information and I don't know where the board wants to go with this. What you want to do with this, this is a driveway that does not serve a use at this point, is an access driveway. And the applicant is, basically wants to get a blessing from the planning board for the work that was done, to get a permit for the work that was done as an access driveway. Once the applicant does in fact come up with a plan to make improvements or to sell the property, then he's aware that will have to be brought up to whatever driver standards we have. So how does the board watch this?
If you remember, originally, he was under pressure from DOT, he had to get that driveway cut.
Yeah, before, before the.
Before the moratorium kicked in.
And also before the, time for the season. Usually that's one of the. Just questions to ask along that way. I see no problem with creating the permit along the way, but also too, have a planning on when they do resubmit, that the apron, I think, is required to be paved, so they will not bring debris or stuff onto Route 1 for safety and everything else. Of course, it's hard to do it in the wintertime, 'cause nobody's open.
Well, I think, I think at this point, when, when they come back and say, this is what we're going to do, we could.
Yeah, I'm just throwing that out as a thought, not as a condition.
No, not at this point. Good, I mean, if you read down through, you'll know there's, there's questions about soil stabilization, the driveway apron, is the culvert big enough to handle everything? I mean, right now, we're just being asked to say, I, I put in the driveway, I screwed up by not getting a permit. Will you let me have the permit after the fact? Do I understand that pretty much correctly?
Yeah, 'cause I may, it was my fault, I guess, when I went into the, I asked Jim for, I need to get a permit. He said, we don't handle Route 1, you have to go up from DOT. So I called him and the guy, the next day came right down, looked at it, told me what I needed to do. I said, okay. So we, obviously we wanted to try to hide it, being on Route 1. And two weeks later, Jim called me, said, you better come in. He says, why? This is where I'm at. But yes, Marty wrote about, they said, once we decide we're gonna use that driveway to go in and out, we do have to pave the apron.
Yep.
That is on the paperwork they sent me.
The DOT sent you?
Yeah.
Okay.
He told me I'll pick to make the apron, how I, I think it had to be, and handles, I think, Ronnie County, for our committed in and out, but he said, you're gonna go and put more, bigger, and you have to come back to us and go change the, this permit, and then at that point, I don't need that. For what I'm doing right now, I didn't need nothing different.
Well, when you do change it, you're gonna have to come back.
I don't believe I'll change it, 'cause I think at this point, I'll probably just gonna clean the rest of the property up, 'cause a little bit, he's mad, I got a poor blow from, some of his equipment's still there.
This is still there?
Yeah. I know him and he's an older fellow and I like him, but I didn't want to take his stuff away, 'cause he called me, I guess I lost my stuff. I said, it's all yours, I'm not taking none. Actually, we helped to move a lot of the equipment down to his house farm. I got the elevators still there and the actual wood processor still sitting on the property. We, Dick and I had, we called, we, one of the places to clean, take the dumpster, bring it, we took the excavator, put everything in the dumpster and out of all the way.
At, at the point that you either decide to do something with the driveway or convert it to a road or put some, put a building back in, then they don't have to come back to us. But other than that, gentlemen, what's your pleasure?
To the chair, Clayman?
Yes.
If you're going to make a motion or anything, this would permit would be for the import of more than access of 100 cubic yards of material. That's what this permit would be for.
Okay.
Okay. Or in that, and place it on the inaccessible. Any here?
The permit itself is not for the driveways, for the importation of more than 100 cubic yards of material.
For the purpose of creating the effort.
For the purpose of creating.
Drive.
I think we should.
I just need a motion.
I'll make a motion. Through the chair. I, 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 I would work. I think we need a public hearing. We gotta try and hold. By the process. 'Cause it's a, it's a major segment, it's a major condition to use in excess of 100 cubic yards. So process.
Just to prevent to do the apron?
No, not the apron, to the importation of material.
From the importation of the material.
Uh. Why? Because it's.
If we're gonna do. Right. Yeah. It's conditional use anywhere, the importation of material.
Yes, but turn on at the same time, where his property line is, okay, this is still on state.
Marty, you.
I'm just.
The applicant is providing the information on importing 900 cubic yards of material again, right?
Right. And to Jens's point, if we're gonna do this, we should do it the right way.
Right, exactly.
Which means that we'll hold a public hearing in two weeks and we'll vote on whether we give you the permit or not. It depends on, probably if your neighbors turn out with hitchforks and torches.
Oh, there's not too many neighbors there, so.
And the frogs are sleeping still, aren't they?
Was that?
The frogs are still sleeping?
Yeah.
Okay, so we, we need a motion for a public hearing.
Make a motion to hold a public hearing. Two weeks.
Make motion, hold public hearing in two weeks.
That's the ele, April eleventh at seven P M.
Second.
Motion been made in seconded for a public hearing, any, any discussion?
No.
Hearing done, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
To the planer, do we need an application, uh, for the condition use permit?
Yeah, Mario, why don't you come in to see me tomorrow, do you have time?
All right, yeah, speak louder.
Mario, could you come and see me tomorrow, we'll get your application all squared on?
Yeah. Okay, thank you very much.
Very good.
We will look forward to seeing you in two weeks.
All right.
Next, I'm on the agenda. Raymond Acres, re-subdivision of an approved subdivision, a proposed re-subdivision of lot five dash zero three, addition of land from tax map thirty lot five eight to create a fifth lot in the Raymond Acres subdivision, the twenty two Black Dog Road in the R two and S P districts, Nicholas Raymond is the applicant, and Mary Ann Raymond is the property owner.
Lack of approval, if you wanted to put up three or four times, I think you guys could share maybe.
Yay, thank you.
Yeah. Remember Pat?
Yeah.
All right. How are you, Mario?
I have a bad one.
Good.
Everybody have my stuff.
Last time we were before the board, we submitted a different plan, um, which showed a cul-de-sac, um, do with two prior subdivision approvals, one in eighty eight, and one in ninety seven, that we found in the files at the town hall, uh, two weeks ago, that, um, a lot of people, I think, didn't realize existed. In ninety seven, the town decided to get rid of the cul-de-sac.
From the, this was, that's the.
From the original, that had the cul-de-sac in this. One of the reasons this happened was because the owner of lot oh two built his house too close to the cul-de-sac that was originally approved. So we went back to the board approximately ten years later, and to see if the town would entertain us getting rid of the cul-de-sac, squaring off that lot, which would cure his setback, um, which was, he was twenty-three feet from the cul-de-sac, and he needed to be fifty. So, that was done, but it was never finished, we, we had this as a preliminary approval from the board, and then the owner of oh two at the time to unwalch, was supposed to then go to his attorney and do the deed work at his expense, uh, and he was either gonna swap, either pay me for that land, or take a piece off the backside and do a swap, but it was his obligation to do the deed work. He never did it, he sold the house. Now, I think, we're four owners removed that live in that house, and it was an issue that the surveyor found, if you look at the big plan, which still shows us owning that property. We wanna try to cure his problem for two reasons, one is, the house is too close to the lot, but also, it could be that the septic field is partially on that piece of property that never got invaded. So we can make that problem go away, um, through this whole process, and since we came to you last, we've had a revised plan that shows that cul-de-sac being gone, because we're gonna need it to him to square him away, so, one of the other issues we had is, is, we were thinking we had to do the wetland delineation, but we have provided to you a waiver, we're requesting to not have to do that, we want it reviewed under what was in place at the time, the first subdivision and the second subdivision was approved, there was no wetland delineation. So, that would eliminate Nick from having to buy a piece of property from the butter, who, who's willing to do something, but he's, and we're not getting very, very far with him, so if, if we can get a waiver for this wetland delineation, we wouldn't need it, there's, there's, uh, plenty of land to make the two acre lot, he would have his frontage based off of this revised right of way, so this right of way comes up and goes over, it'd be a hammerhead if you look closely at it within that, which would give the turnaround for the fighter trucks and whatnot. So, there's two waivers, one is basically not to have to, to be able to use the standards when the first two were done, not having to delineate wetlands, and second is to be able to access that lot off the existing road, oh two comes in off of, uh, that driveway, and Nick's lot, the new lot, we want to have that access off that driveway, and leave it as it is, rather than going in and cleaning out the city of trees and having a big, uh, we, cul-de-sac.
Also, that access wave was granted for four.
In the original, in the original plan, we thought that everybody would access from that right of way, and then it turned out they didn't, the front, the two front lots, they come right off the old post crew. So the only, the only ones that are accessing it off that road right now is myself and, uh, us.
Yeah.
And, oh, you made it, great. Um, they owned lot oh two, and we've been working with them to try to square this problem away, and it would also make the tax assessors', uh, description be, it, it would be concurrent with the map, which it isn't.
Is, is this the one you're calling lot oh two?
This is lot oh two.
Okay.
So I didn't know whether if we were doing the wetland delineation, where this is a, a review of an existing subdivision, do we have to show his wetlands, and their wetlands, and their wetlands, they're already approved, there's a house built in every lot. So I thought the simplest thing we could do would be request a waiver, which I think the board has the authority to do, um, thus we give Nick his lot and clear enough the issue with their lot. So there's two waiver requests and this new map.
So the, the currently approved subdivision includes the three lots, right? Or four, maybe? This was, this was the current.
This is the original one.
That was the eighty seven.
Yeah, and they're all gonna be accessed off this right of way, in the end, they weren't.
But you still, you still only have the same number.
That's still there.
We're creating a fifth lot.
Right. So they are creating.
So this was done ten years later, and still wetlands weren't an issue, I don't think the town adopted them to what, two thousand fifteen, sixteen, somewhere in there?
No, they, they had shoreline zone at that time, we had shoreline zone since the eighties, since it became an inventory. But what had changed, what had changed was, uh, what had changed was the shoreline was only for, uh, stream protection, that was the issue here.
Right, that's, that's R two.
Yeah, it had been changed. But the only issue that they had at that time was.
Yes.
So can you do that, can you adopt or allow for the drivelines that were placed in the baby, even though they're only drivelines in place?
They in order, no.
We have sort of like, oh, right, when we build a house, that is, we have the front of the book, we signed the house in nineteen eighty seven, we, that we built it in nineteen eighty seven.
It's just, for the board's information, uh, we paid a visit to a gentleman by the name of Rush in the D E P, we brought him all of this information that you have, and basically, he was saying that, in their opinion, it would be grandfathered. And then he goes on to cite a bunch of different language about the size of this lot, how they wouldn't get involved, I have copies of that, of this. So he said he wouldn't get involved, and he further goes on to say in there that. Right, right, that we can actually fill up the forty-three hundred square feet without a permit.
And, and will that solve your problem, by?
No, no, we don't wanna fill anything.
Right.
We wanna fill the house on the upland piece, we don't wanna disturb anything that's already been there, all the other houses are already here, and you can see here have wetland, um, we just were looking for that waiver, so that we could build on this high land, wouldn't, wouldn't be getting into any of this, the only thing that we would have to fill is where we put a culvert, we have to fill up the driveway.
Because I'm home, you're building up, I'm sorry? Yeah.
Did you get a copy of that?
Where you're building the culvert, is there wetlands there?
No, it's just out of it, if you look on the plan, it just misses it, but he threw that out there and put it in the letter, he was very good to try to cover everything.
So, Tad, the crux of this issue is that the net density in the subdivision requires two acres of upland, is that, is that? No, but that residential density is, the way it's done, the way it was done, still is done, that you subtract out unsuitable soils, which would be wetland soils. Yep. And. From, from the, from the overall. From the overall. Right. And that's why that, you start looking at the land, I think that's why Leon started looking at additional purpose, uh, additional purchase, because to do the net residential density, you have, you, you take all the land, subtract the wetlands from it, and the road, and then, then you divide what's left over by two acres, that's how you, how you get density. Right. So, um, and I think Leon did that initially. We had tried working, well, no, we had tried working it together, so. Right.
He started out at one number, and grown to another number, and another number, and now he doesn't even know what the number's gonna be, so it's just, so that's when we, we started to look back at it, and when we made the call of the D E P, to see how they would look at this, and they thought it'd be grandfathered, that's what we're asking for in the waivers, that you review it as the standard was used on the first two subdivision approvals.
I think, I think this. I'm not, I, I don't interpret this the same way, this is, this, this says everything after nineteen ninety five, or before nineteen ninety five, before September twenty ninth, your last approval was in nineteen ninety seven, which was after this, so you should, you should not be held to that standard prior to nineteen ninety five.
There is some, he says that, in the end, what's it say?
Any woodland alterations prior to September twenty ninth?
Hi folks, yeah, Mike Valen, I've been working with Raymond's on this project, and, and I, I agree with what you're saying, but if you read just a little bit further in that paragraph, talks about that furthermore, each parcel is now eligible for minor alterations in freshwater wetlands without department permits.
Correct.
Pursuant to the National Resource Protection Act, so, there are, there is, there are opportunities here for, for again, some minor alterations without further D E P involved or approval, which is the point that I think Mr. Langlois is trying to make.
I agree, but I don't believe that that holds us, it means that we have to be held to that standard.
That, that may or may not be the case, uh.
We have different standards for, for shoreline, uh, and for the, maybe we'll be familiar with it, I'll break it.
This is our.
But for shoreline zoning, we have, we have a different standard than.
Sure, but as I understand it, this is no more restrictive than, than National Resources Protect, uh, Protect Act, as, as adopted within Title thirty eight.
Okay.
In my understanding, so, I think the D E P is, certainly the, the town rules and regulations, the ordinances are as restrictive as, as what the D E P requires, of course, that's required by state law, and I do not believe that, that a run disordnance is actually beyond that, but I think that this actually is determinative on this issue.
Actually, they do exceed the states, yeah.
In, in this particular instance? And I guess we.
Really, they do.
We need to talk further about that, but again, this is just evidence that the D E P has looked at this as comfortable with it, which I think in, in, in most instances satisfies, uh, what everyone's on complaint with.
What do you deal with their net, the present density, or, do you have any for you?
I, I, I don't have that in front of me, I don't have that in front of me, I mean, I, we need to talk further, we'll be going on about that, I don't really believe you folks, I don't think that, my understanding is, you know, the, the lot size is certainly.
If I, maybe I'm reading, he's saying nineteen ninety five, but nineteen ninety five, they won't get involved, it won't, it isn't certain.
Well, I understand that, but that's right, in nineteen ninety five, exactly.
So, well, so that re one, each one would, unless it comes back to the total.
It comes back to the total, it's not a question of, right, but if you're not proposing, I mean, it's almost like we're, you've got two different topics, and we're melding into, into one, but really, there's two independent topics, one, you've got the wetland impact, that the D E P has jurisdiction over, we have some level of jurisdiction over, that, you know, laws came into place in the late eighties, mid nineties, whenever it happens, but then we've also got a subdivision regulation that was in place back when this was done, and now it is a different version of that, I guess, is in place now, and that's where we've got to understand, so really, I mean, to me, the, the, this is great, the letter from the D E P is great, because it, it does, if you guys were proposing major wetland impacts, it would, it would sort of give us the, the comfort that, that was okay from the D E P, but really, that's not the, the major point of the issue of why, you know, why there's the discussion going on, 'cause you're really not proposing much wetland impacts, if anything.
That's correct, and, and I think that's in part what Mr. Langlois is trying to get at here, which is, is, as he understands it, we're not proposing a big impact here from the wetlands.
Right, right.
With zero impact, if at all possible.
Right, but there, but there's still the subdivision issue of needing the.
That density or any other.
Any other criteria.
That isn't eligible for a waiver where, this isn't a proposed total subdivision, this is a revision of a subdivision, where, uh, the majority of it was approved prior to those regulations, and that's why we're thinking that, and, and all the houses, the other houses have been built, um, if, if you had the, uh, the capability of, of granting one, there's anything that says you can't.
There, there is a, obviously a waiver, waiver provision within the regulations, which I know you are all familiar with, because you deal with a regular.
What waiver are we asking, I guess, that.
Did you get, did you get part of the two of them?
Yes.
We did, we, we just, we just had the legal thing added to it.
Right.
Just haven't had a chance to.
Right, one that's based on the wetlands delineation, and the other relates to the, to the road.
So you want, you wanna waiver from the delineation of the wetlands?
Correct.
And what's the one for the road?
Uh, the road relates to the fact that, uh, we feel as though the hammerhead would, would be adequate for.
It's the frontage.
Ingress and egress gives the frontage, um, and again, this isn't keeping with what's existing with that subdivision, and what has been existing with that subdivision since I was in grammar school.
And I've talked to all of the people that are part of this subdivision, one of them was here, and they would sign whatever, they have no problem with that.
So I have a couple of questions, 'cause I'm sort of new to the party, in the abstract, I don't have any, in the abstract, uh, all things being equal, I wouldn't have any problem with you, um, you know, going back and using the earlier definition of wetlands delineation, lack of a definition.
There wasn't.
Right, no lack of a definition, but I wonder, um, from Tad, is there a statute of limitations in terms of permits for subdivisions and approvals and things like that, and second of all, I worry that it opens a can of worms for the board, if in fact others come with similar, uh, issues, or what they claim are similar issues.
That's why.
And all of a sudden, we're dealing with people who have wetlands that they wanna have categorized in a different way, and they'll say, well, we did it for you, and I'm not saying it's fair.
I, I don't know how many of those cases exist in town, this, like I say, it's all developed, and it's, and it's, the road's been there for thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five years, uh, servicing the other lots, my intent, when I, when I got this parcel, was I did the two acre lots for everyone else, and I kept the four acre lot with the intention of, uh, cutting a piece off for my son, I just didn't follow what was going on with the regulations of the D E P, and I understand that a lot of it's been floating around since, uh, the late nineties, but I don't think the town really adopted it till two thousand thirteen, two thousand sixteen, somewhere in there, so, I don't know that this isn't a very unique situation in town, and I don't know that there's another one that would come up, to be honest, um.
I, I just worry that as, having just. I just worry that as, having just built a house and understanding, filling in what somebody was called by the fire pond, then somebody else called it something else, we had to have DEP and it was a whole big thing. That as building, I guess what I'm saying is, as people buy lots and they build houses, problems that you might not have anticipated in nineteen eighty-seven, even in two thousand eighteen and nineteen, to far better all of a sudden, you know, be present, I think. And I don't think we can imagine all these scenarios under which, you know, people are going to get creative. So, as I said, in the abstract, I don't have any problem with it, but Tad, you would have to tell us if we're opening, A, a can of worms, and B, whether or not we can do that by going back.
Plus, we're solving the other can of worms here.
Yeah, and I understand, that's a real problem.
That could be a real problem with the town.
Well, for this guy, certainly.
I guess there's some issue too with our septic system that could be too close to that. We were aware of that issue, but when we bought the house, we were given this letter.
To no consent, I don't know.
And I.
Yeah, but it's a road, it's not really.
I think you just handed it to me to show the board, you want me to do it to them?
Oh, no, they already have it.
Yeah.
Okay, so you're aware, because we didn't find one that had broken paint, so he gave us one this weekend.
We didn't even realize that it was now, because the applicant disappeared.
Right.
But the fact is that the ninety-seven subdivision is a subdivision of record. And that is, that's whether the lot lines, whether deeds reflect that that's what this board approved, was ninety-seven seven.
True, but it was never finished. The applicant never finished it. He took off, sold the property, he took off.
I understand, but that's.
Because it currently still shows on a new survey, when Leon goes to the registry, that that's our property.
I think the point is we can clear it up here.
Right, we can clear up a host of problems. That's why I say I think this is unique within the town, this, I don't.
There's issues.
I mean, the question is, is there any reason why you guys can't grant that waiver, given the circumstances of the prior approval? And then the issues that have come up.
I struggle with the idea of setting a precedent that somebody else can come over and argue and say, you looked at somebody's subdivision that was twenty-one, twenty-two years old and agreed to allow them to do something, you have to do that for me. And I disagree with that completely, this, the rules in the land use ordinance are the rules in the land use ordinance and they should be followed. The fact that something occurred twenty or twenty-five years ago that was done wrong does not mean that I should ignore what is currently before me in the land use ordinance. That's the problem I have.
We also waive things according to the unique circumstances of each case.
We do, but I'm not sure I want to waive something that's that old.
The planning board's here. We can't waive the standards, but they have to do a very good reason for waiving the circumstances. And it has to be remarkable.
And is the curative effects that is being proposed here, is that something that strikes me as?
I'm not sure what's being cured by doing this.
Well, this gentleman is going to be able to.
If his septic field is on our property.
Yeah, but that's a deed issue that was never taken care of. The planning board did the subdivision in ninety-seven, and that's what the record is, and that deed should apply.
Someone granted him a permit to put that septic through, it didn't need septic. It's on that property.
But which, what, this is your property?
That's my property right there, that was never conveyed.
See, this is where we're, I'm going to disagree, only because, see, the planning board, the reason I'm saying that is the planning board made, gave you an approval in ninety-seven and that's what was approved to go out there.
See, we can't, we can't perfect. We can't perfect any of the paperwork until you first get the planning board approval that this could be done. We're not going to go and deed it to them till we know in fact that the town would agree to it. And that's what that ninety-seven plan was. Then he was supposed to finish it. He was supposed to file with the code enforcement officer, let me finish. The deed work showing that he had ownership of this property. And he was also supposed to enter into a road maintenance agreement before he got a building permit, which is in the file unsigned, the code enforcement officer at the time didn't do that either. So I've been bearing the cost thirty-four years, so many came in that road.
I understand that, and I understand your frustration.
When he bought his house, his realtor said, oh, don't worry about it, it's taken care of, I mean.
It wasn't our realtor, it was the realtor selling the house.
Yeah, well, that's a lawsuit waiting to happen, and you probably could rescind your sale and purchase based on the misrepresentation of the estate. No, I'm not giving legal advice, I'm just saying, that's a mess.
See, like, if we can do this, we can square this up. He's, Steve is agreed, because Dick would have to have a maintenance agreement with us. He's willing to enter into one, ask it fast. I mean, technically, he could probably tell us the, you know, yeah. He's willing to do that. We're all going to be good neighbors and get along, he's going to get squared away, we're going to have the road maintenance agreement, so I don't have to keep paying the full expense of maintaining that, he'll get split three ways. And we just solve a host of issues here. And I don't know that that doesn't make a special circumstance that you guys could act on.
And to Mr. Bergen's point, the board certainly, clearly has the discretion by virtual ordinance and regulation, town regulation, to exercise waivers. And this is a very, very unique circumstance. This is not the sort of thing that I posit. I think that the town of Verona would, and the board would see every day. And the whole purpose, whole drive and purpose of the waiver process is to allow folks, is to allow the board, you folks, to consider these very unique circumstances and permit applicants to move forward based upon those unique circumstances. And I feel as though this is unique enough and there's good justification. It's a no harm, no foul scenario and seems as though approval would be appropriate.
Can I ask a few questions and comments? I think the change in the cul-de-sac issue, I think that's a separate issue than splitting and creating another lot, right? But it is, we could easily take care of the setback issue on your property. But that, that's not, that's not an issue, I think that that's an easy fix. But separating property into two, I'm trying to grasp, like, what, what's the issue? Is it the wetlands that was designated, is it because of that that, so we have to take, remove that from the total acreage? Is that, is that one of the issues?
From Sats perspective, the problem is that the owners are having as to who owns what is really not this board's issue. I think we're obfuscating the issue of dividing this parcel by talking about this. Because this plan here was what is recorded and operated, and that is what the planning board approved and they accept. If it wasn't executed, that's not the planning board's issue.
Why would they issue a no consent letter, then?
Because, because they were just trying to help.
Because that's what's in the deed, which you did wrong.
Right, but the point is, this is what, from the planning board's perspective, this is what we approved. This is what you needed to do, why wasn't it done? That's what the planning board said. And I understand all that, I understand all that.
But you've got to understand, the records within the town were unbelievable. There is hardly any record, there's no record of map thirty lot five, the original piece, and the original subdivision idea. I think some of it was possibly lost to the fire, or I've been told by people in the town, there's nothing there. We go to the four folders of these lots. All this in my folder is a letter from the Brunswick Artisan Well and a septic design. My building permit is in someone else's lot, my deed was in someone else's lot, it was just a mess, it was very hard. We spent at least twenty hours within the town to get these files now squared away and try to recreate the map thirty lot five so we could start, everybody would know where it started and how we ended up where we are. But just because the town was, yes, you can do that, and then the applicant didn't go and finish it and get it recorded, that's immediate property.
Let me ask a question, Tad. Notwithstanding the split of, what is this, lot two, your lot, the way your house is on. Notwithstanding that, what is the, what's the major issue of reapproving the subdivision to make it look almost like what they had done in that settlement? If it was never duly recorded and made official?
But it was recorded.
Two years later.
A year later, this one, it's two years later.
See, I can't go to your house and draw a line on a plan or record.
So, why is the surveyor, now, let me finish my question, please. Why is the surveyor then still documenting this as the legitimate legal property?
Because the deed was never filed for the subdivision of this lot, that's why.
So who technically, who technically owns this little piece?
I do, Mary Ann does.
So, in order to solve their problem, if they owned this little piece of land, it would go away.
That would go away, if it's their encroachment, they would then not be a non-conforming lot. They bring another non-conformant, which affects its value.
Right, no, I understand that.
Plus, if his sewer is, his septic field is on there. By rights under state statute, as I told by Jim, the code enforcement officer. They could ask on his door and tell him he's got to go live somewhere at the town's expense. If he doesn't have the money to pay to move that, the town does, and then they lean it. And that's going to create a host of problems with him and the bank, and a host of problems with the town. But I say, it's an opportunity to clean it up and help mitigate this lot if we can just get the waiver.
What difference have had on land we're never going to touch anyway?
I ask a question, we've had another subdivision within the past year where they built too close to a setback with the deck. And they came in and asked, can we just, can we just move, they actually had two lots near each other, so they were able to move that line. And they came in and asked for an amendment to the approved subdivision.
Within the last year.
Within the last year, and we regretted that. Couldn't something like that be done on this?
Well, I would agree with, that's what we're trying to do here, but I think getting involved in this, in this issue here is really, is obfuscating the basic issue of trying to get a road in here that meets standard. Because frankly speaking, that plan made a, that plan didn't meet the standards, the planning board approved the plan that didn't meet the standards of the zoning ordinance at that time. You know, that was, they made a private, they basically took.
By least she corrected somehow.
That's right, and that's what they're doing here. And I guess I just want to stay focused on this issue here, on how you get a road in here and make this lot so it can be, we all have a subdivision, say, within this road meets the standards, whether it be the new standards or the old standards, but make sure that that's done, that's what my focus is.
That sounds like a quid pro quo.
That's very close to the town standard, it's a foot short in width, and we certainly can deal with that.
And we would also need this hammerhead actually bent.
Yes.
Yes, we would.
So we would need a design for that. The issue Jim and I talked about was the issue, I don't, the planning board can't waive the wetland issues because this is an existing shoreline zone. You can waive, what you can do is get a waiver for the amount of the setback, that's what you can get. But we can't say it doesn't exist, because it's, it is shoreline zone, it isn't our shoreline zone.
R two. He said it was the stream land in R two.
R two.
Jim told us it was stream resource protected.
Right, that's what.
R two, not.
You said shoreline.
Yeah, it is shoreline, it is shoreline.
He told us, he said it was street, uh, streaming.
No, it's a, it's a stream protection district. Which is short on the map, which is a shoreline zone.
Okay.
Stream protection district is one of three shoreline zones.
Yeah, but we're in the stream, which is a lesser, lesser standard.
Yes, and that's the point, is that what we talked about was what your setbacks were.
Right.
Okay, and can the board waive those setbacks based on the morphology of the type of string? Yes, they can, but they have that reasonable reason for doing that. The only other issue besides putting the road in, the issue from the planning board's perspective is, and this is why Leon was looking at getting some more land there, was the net residential density that.
If you delineate the wetlands.
Well, we, we have no choice, because that's what you have to do.
Well, I think there is a waiver provision for a total. Is there not?
There is.
There's two things, so, I mean, so you're basically saying that we're going to be rid of our net residential density. That's what you're asking, you're asking for a waiver for, and this is why I'm asking for clear identification of which would be asking for, asking for a waiver from, just waivers, waivers, what you've got, be specific.
It's very, it's very specific.
Okay, yeah. Well, this, no, that's not that one, it's the new one.
It's the new one.
Is that the new one?
Lot fourteen.
No, that's the old one, they just brought in one tonight.
They've just the new one.
Oh, right.
There's one for the world. After we started doing the homework to find out how really messed up the whole thing was, we ended up changing it to this, and changing the plan to this so that we get the frontage. Anything worth looking at?
Well, it's a road we can, it's a ordinance provision, subdivision submission requirement, it's a special. What are you asking a waiver for, what provision? In a subdivision ordinance, are you asking a waiver for?
There are, there are two of them, one is, one is the wetlands delineation and the other being related to the road condition. And for that reason, there are two separate waivers. One relates to our Article eleven, traffic conditions, we were just speaking about, one relates to Article eleven, identification of freshwater wetlands.
So you want to waive shoreline zoning, basically?
Because it wasn't legal when they made the subdivision.
Under what it was originally approved back thirty-three, thirty-four years ago.
So you want, you want.
DEP considers it grandfathered in their house.
Okay, but shoreline.
It would not going to impact any of what.
But you would, but need to know exactly what waivers, so you're asking a waiver from shoreline zoning regulations, is that what you're saying? And you're asking also a waiver from, basically from our net residential density requirement?
Well, no, we would have the two acres if you waived the delineations, right?
Right, so it would be both, but it would be both, because one is, one is.
One solves the other.
One is, one is shoreline zoning, which is a different animal, the other is subdivision delineation. Okay, subdivision regulations are where net residential density takes effect. And this is a subdivision, and then the shoreline zoning is above all of that, that is a zoning regulation. And so you're asking for waivers from those two elements. Plus, I guess there's something about the road in here too.
Right.
Road design. So, really, we're talking about, so what we're getting, when we're getting down to it, what you're saying is that, A, you're asking for a waiver from net residential density in shoreline zone, and your net residential density requirement in the subdivision.
I think that's what it boils down to, yes.
And the other is that you're asking for setback waivers for the stream protection district that goes through there.
In the ordinance, it says you're only a twenty, you showed.
Set to twenty-five feet.
You're asking for a waiver from the standard seventy-five foot setback is what you're asking for.
Well, I thought when you went, when you were with Jim, and you, remember you kicked back and you opened the thing, you said, it's not seventy-five feet, it's twenty-five.
It can go down to twenty-five based on the plan.
Well, I know that from the DEP as well.
Well, unfortunately, DEP is not running this one, because they gave the mandate to the town. As we discussed, they gave the mandate to the town to enforce their regulation, which is shoreline zone. So we're doing that on DEP, well, they basically, they forced, that's a mandate, unfunded mandate of the town. So, that's what I want to be really clear about on our waivers, is, so we're asking for a waiver on requirement for net residential density for the new lot, we're asking for a waiver on a reduction in setback from the stream protection district, and you're asking for a waiver on this road design for the new, for the new.
Because it basically means that it would just, if the road would stay the same, the hammerhead would just go in, even the turnaround.
And this, and this actually comes off of your lot, because now this is going to be a separate right of way, right now.
This is part of it, the new proposed one.
Yeah, all of this is going to be separate, because this lot is going to stand alone. Right now, the way that it was done in ninety-seven is they made a lot what we now call an estate lot, which didn't exist in ninety-seven. That Black Dog Grove is part of your lot. And so, it basically, you didn't have, you have what we call an estate lot, but they didn't have a state lot's method. So, I'm not sure what the planning board did back then, but that was, so this corrects that problem. It gives new frontage, I'd assume it will be new adequate frontage on this new road, do math on that. And then, and then this will have new frontage.
But nobody has helped this. This isn't resolved.
No, no, we're going to resolve it, it's the approval, we.
Will give them the mindset.
But it, well, that's what I was thinking, it seems to me that that land was supposed to belong to them originally, under the original subdivision, but the deed never got.
No, no, under the original subdivision, his deed reads that it comes up the right of way and is on a cul-de-sac. And that's still what it reads today when you go to your county, this is what Leon turned up. That property was never conveyed to the first guy that built the house and encroached on it. He was supposed to do the deed work that would square this off as a board approved. We came in and said, can we do this, and that's what they signed on. Then he was supposed to go and do the deed work, given him ownership of it, and he didn't. And he was supposed to do the maintenance, this was supposed to be before he got a building permit.
But my point is, what prevents you, it's your, it's your land right now, correct? What prevents you and the landlord from going and recording the deed in your county and resolving? What prevents you and the landlord from going and recording the deed in your county and resolving that particular issue?
We're here so bad, it's not, it's not their duty.
No, exactly.
You know, the duty of the prior.
It's kind of a give and take thing.
We're gonna have to go after the prior.
Four hours ago.
Yeah, and that's the issue.
This is why we're not having to go through all of that.
Right, it just gets solved.
I mean, while we had all the deed work done, ready to convey, when it was been done, Leon's done it.
So Ted, is this, this is fully technically and legally yours? So that's done? So you have the right to mediate?
Yes, we have the right to mediate.
So that wasn't part of this mess, okay, so that's done?
We haven't done it.
Okay, but it can be.
It can be done, and we propose to make that part of this whole thing. We'll do this, 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 and that. He gets his deed, and I think Jim said he wanted, would wanna go to the town manager to see if a letter that you issued, uh, it goes back to the registry, it nullifies that consent order that he did. So there is no longer listed as a non-conforming lot.
So this one is in the cul-de-sac, right?
Yes.
So, I, I, can I ask a question about the time of that one? Yeah, well, at the time, it would've been, it all worked, there was, there was enough acre for, for all those lots. But, um, right now, what I, I don't know how much wetland we're talking about, I don't see any, any, uh. I can see it, but I don't.
It was a little less than acre, it was point eight.
No, it was one, we needed point six four more acres.
Yeah, you need more.
But is that for, is that for just the, the splitting of the one large lot into two?
That from going this one to going to there, we needed to get, um, point six upland.
And that's why you wanted that piece of land?
We were done with it, and he counted the price.
And then when it went out, surveying his land, this is mostly wetland, created by.
The original subdivision included all of this.
Correct, all of it.
How much wetland is associated in these three lots?
Some here, he didn't do down here.
So there's no, we don't see what it is.
Well, I guess, my question, right, my question, if you're, if we're gonna amend to the subdivision, we, and, and part of it is to create a new lot within the subdivision, a fifth lot within the four acre subdivision, would be to look at the overall subdivision and say, okay, it was so big.
That was my question, because if we're gonna review this, don't we have to review that as being part of it? If it's a revision, all of a sudden, that opens up a, and that opens up a real can of worms.
What can, does that open?
Well, he's got wetlands, he's got wetlands.
Yeah, they just have to delineate.
Right.
Because of when they did it, you didn't have to.
Exactly, I completely understand that, but is that something that could be reviewed? I mean, do you?
I have a follow-up question.
Is, is the, I guess I would like to understand, is, is that something that would be beneficial to, for your circumstances?
No. No, because then all of a sudden, he doesn't have a two acre lot, he doesn't have a two acre lot. Everybody's like, the house is already there, and the houses are already there.
So what, do you need two acres of upland?
No.
In each lot?
No, no, you don't, and that's, that would be, that's net residential density on a lot basis.
Right, right.
This is for the whole project with net, and that's what, that's what Leon did originally, in this plan that you guys first got. That was dated on October twenty-third.
Yep.
And that.
That's the one you brought in, you guys actually.
As long as this lot here is in excess of two acres.
Right, the lot's, it's cutting off.
You don't need to necessarily have two acres of upland to have a conforming lot.
Well, then, I don't see the issue.
Yeah.
That, that function, that'd be wonderful.
And that's what I was kinda overdoing. I was thinking, you have two acres, right? You don't need two acres of upland, why can't it just be two acres of total land? Of total land, which everyone else is.
He's been trying to get that to where it is. The problem is when the first guy scathed, said he was gonna do this, this, and the others, then he sold it to someone, he didn't do it, and then they sold it to someone else. The third one that came along, title company bought it, and the bank account dealt it to his fourth brother.
Right, that's why I was asking, how you got a mortgage and how it was titled.
Well, if, their title company, Red Bull, picked it up. Their title company did pick it up, but it had the no consent agreement, so they were happy with it.
Oh.
So yes, and when we, when we purchased our home.
As far as taking.
We were aware of the situation. We were not told of it by the realtor selling the home, we were found out through our realtor who looked into the deed. There was no, no change to that deed. He, they took care of it, and that's when this guy take, when he got this. So, or, I'm sorry, this, Leonard, no action.
If he said that was written on the front.
But that's assuming your home's.
Square of way, well, then, wouldn't have done the no consent agreement.
And the way.
They know, when they did that. Too much back.
This was the only piece where the density come out.
The way it is right now.
Five acre, five lots.
We, we like, when we first purchased the home, our intent was eventually going to the garage. The way it reads right now, I can't build anything that I'm not.
I understand, but I mean, it's.
Then you're done.
It's a mess.
And they looked over it all the time.
Then we can proceed.
So you wanna do that first? Well, I'd, I'd at least like to have an idea. You know, you got a, you got a three acre lot here with no wetland, and a, and a three acre lot here with no wetland?
Well, those are all two acre.
Well, I, I, there's, there's.
Our acreage is two point two five acres.
Okay.
That's what our, it was two point two.
How much of it is?
He's two point oh one. I have, that I don't know.
Well, that's the discussion we're having, right? Because if, if you have enough upland, it doesn't matter.
Right here, it shows.
How much wetland to.
How much upland do you need in order?
We have, we have that density calculations.
Ted, correct me if I'm wrong, you don't in any given lot have to have a certain amount of upland other than what you do to build a house, put in a septic system, you know, all that kinda stuff?
Right.
But in the overall subdivision, you've got, the net density concept is to make sure that you have an, a, an adequate amount of upland within your subdivision. So you, so somebody doesn't come in with a ten acre lot, that's nine acres of wetland.
Right.
And try and put five house lots.
No, no, I understand that.
So, so my, my take is that if you were to take the original outline of the subdivision, all four lots, and say it is so many acres, and you deduct out however much wetland is associated with that, does the math work out to give five lots? Or does the math work out to give four lots?
So what are you doing?
Well, my que, my question is this, how do you?
So if it doesn't, if, if it doesn't, the four lots are approved, there's no harm, no foul. If it doesn't for the five, then to me, the, the division of, of your lot, pretty much, unless we can provide some, do some waiver to the net density, doesn't go much further.
So that's, that's our take on this, is instead of delving into that rabbit hole and going through that exercise, let's address it from a waiver standpoint and get that taken care of.
I need to know what a waiver.
Right, and I don't know.
Fifty percent wetland, or is it just?
But they're already got waiver on it anyway, so what is point six?
Point six four.
But it's still a subdivision, it's still a subdivision, so.
And this is where it doesn't work out.
People looking at, looking at the whole subdivision.
How much, how much land, upland do you need to build a house? Say you have that two acre lot, how much of that land needs the upland to build a home?
Depends on the size of the home, yeah, that's, it's building envelope.
Now, we have plenty of things on envelope, we already worked it out with, with, with that, and the, the field, and the roads.
So Ted, can they count wetlands as part of the total lot size as opposed to upland, or high and dry as opposed to wet?
I think Jamie already stated, you take the total amount of acreage, subtract steep soils, unsuitable soils, and wetlands from that, and divide the net amount of dense, net amount of acreage by the, by two, which is two lots. And that's, and that'll tell you how many two acre lots, that tells you how many lots you can build in the property. That's the first thing I told Leon when we started this thing, and he did that calculation, assuming that, that we're really talking about this issue here, and said, yeah, I need to add this much more land to the property without wetlands in order to make that net residential density hit five, five lots.
But did he take, did he go to that level? I mean, looking at this area calculation, it looks like he just looked at partial.
Right, he didn't, he didn't look at anything else.
So I don't know, I mean, to me, the net density is a, is a way just to take a big piece of land and say, okay, what's your reasonable, responsible way of developing that is to, you can get a maximum of how many lots? What, before we talk too much about the division of your lot, is to understand in that grand scheme of things, what that original net, that density might be. If it comes back as five acres, then I think, you know, if you're comfortable building a, a, a house on a lot that has, you know, two thousand square feet of upland, and you can do your house, get your driveway, do your septic system, do everything you need to, how you divvy up those, that, those lots with however much upland versus wetland is truly up to the landlord? Does that make sense?
But that's what, you have to change all of the lot lines?
No, you, you, I would, wait, wait, wait.
Okay, I'm saying, so.
Pretty sure, right.
That's essentially what he asked me for.
It doesn't matter about the lot line, and that's the good thing about net residential density, you can do it with the existing.
So that you just need to redo your math?
So, so there's, there's an opportunity, if we have more information, we can, we can see this through. Without having to make a guess in the dark.
So, so what, you want us to come back and have them go through all those until they need all, show all the wetlands in the whole place? Kind of costly.
We need that, that's the.
I mean, we would need some kind of evidence of what the wetlands were.
Extent.
Right. Or are, are, I mean, this is a current, you're looking to amend a subdivision.
Right, but I think that's what the waiver request is dealing with, right?
That's, that's the point.
Knowing, knowing Trevor's.
They're asking for is for net residential density.
Right. Knowing Trevor's land, I'm fairly confident that Lot Three is gonna be very similar to Trevor's. Trevor didn't have much of a wetland on, on his property, so I think Lot Three is, would have very little wetland. Lot Four.
So the standard would be, you follow up.
All the house lots.
The entire.
Subdivision.
Subdivision, the entire piece of Robert, and then you back out.
You told us that you didn't want us to run long.
So how much would have to be left for five?
I know, but, then why'd you tell us? I, oh, you told Leon that?
Yeah, I told, I, I, I said.
That, you have to take out the right of way? He told us initially.
You take out the road.
Oh, the road, oh, 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 I'm sorry.
The road.
I misunderstood.
Yeah, not, not the right of way.
Gotcha.
That's what I told you, don't include the wetland, include the road surface.
Gotcha, that makes, I misunderstood.
So what they need to do is look at the whole subdivision as a whole.
Yeah.
Then they need to subtract whatever the wetlands are as they exist.
Wetlands and the roads.
And the roads today. And see whether or not, and don't include, forget the houses are there, and then see whether or not you've got enough to make five houses. Is that what you're, five lots, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
In essence.
That's what net residential density requires.
Well, right out of the gate, I don't know if that makes much sense, because you're still gonna need two acres? Or just the envelope where the house is?
You need, you need.
Just the envelope.
For example, if Lot Three is a six acre. Okay, and there's no wetlands at all out there, that, that accounts for three houses.
Uh, they're all about two, two.
Well, yeah, but it was just.
Okay, I didn't know if it mattered.
If you've got a six acre lot, and there's no wetlands, that accounts for three houses.
So they wanted.
And everything else, you just have to come up with another two.
So out of the, the ten or so acres there, how much would have to be up?
What are we looking for?
Yeah, what, what is our, what is the number we have to hit?
For your lot, for your lot, the number is suitable for you to be able to put a septic system, a house, and.
No.
In terms of upland area, in terms of upland area for your.
That we need to prove for the whole place.
For your house, just for the house, you need to have enough wet, enough acreage in there.
In the whole subdivision?
In the whole subdivision to be able to get five lots.
Yeah, so, does that have to take out it on the others? Or is it?
The square footage of the five homes?
You don't take out the driveways.
You're basically saying if there's.
What he's saying is forget that the houses are even there.
Sure.
Right.
Look at the, look at this, one more piece of property.
So out of all those lots, I only need to find two acres of the land, is what you're saying?
Whatever that total acreage is, subtract the wetlands and the roads.
You need, so how much would you need?
What's left is, is it, is it enough five houses on that piece?
What's left, you just have to show.
Divided by five.
So we have the, the two acres.
What you need to do is make sure that you have, um, ten acres of the, in the whole place, it's a whole.
I know.
That's not possible.
Every time he memorized.
Which is why it's only a ten acre lot, how is that possible?
That's why, that's why Leon said he had to have the land.
Alright, so we're gonna push.
This may be relatively simple?
No, we had a good.
Well, I think let's clarify, let's go over one more time with past, so we understand exactly what the formula is.
Probably Jamie.
Is that what it was?
Say this, say how you could see it. Oh, we, yeah, of upland.
So we've got, we've got, we've got to take a step back. What we need to understand is, maybe in somewhere, if you have, let's just say, twelve acres of total land, right here. If there's, if there's only ten right here, and you got all this wetland, don't even bother going forward. I mean, because to me, you're gonna deduct this wetland out, and you're gonna be less than, you're gonna be less than, than.
Every home they drill a month on upland, and his home could be built in dissemble with sewer.
But unless there's a provision that we can waive the net density calculation.
To, there is, we're, we're telling.
But I'm here, but you need, you, so you've got a, what's your, what's your role in this?
What I mean.
No, 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 I asked you a question, what's your role in this? Are you a surveyor engineer?
I am not a surveyor.
Okay, so you're an attorney, alright, so that's your role. So, what we need to understand is, if you want us to do a waiver for that, what are the provisions, in, as an attorney, you understand the law. What are the provisions under our ordinance, the town's law, that we can grant that waiver? That's your charge.
And that, that's what I identified already, and I'm happy to do that again, but, and what I just understood the board to say was, you want to have an understanding of what the percentage is specifically that you're waiving, you want a more specific waiver.
If, if you are confident, if it's.
Point six four.
You're saying, you're saying this is only ten acres. And you're trying to get five lots out of it. You know you don't have the right thing to give up from the net density calculation, right? You can't give up any, you don't have any wetland.
That's where we're confused, because we're saying, yes, in that amount of acres, it's a net density provision. Same to do it.
Not, not under the net density provision.
The net density provision, because that's what we were just talking about with Ted, as far as that's the part that's related practically. But what I am, what I am hearing, certainly this is the board, is they wanna know, okay, what is the percentage that they're waiving off of the net density?
What I'm wondering, if you, if you had the ability to justify that this piece of land, before any house was gone, could be, could go through the net density process, come up with five acres, five lots.
What we're trying to get across.
If that's not, it would be in excess of ten acres. It would be ten acres plus whatever wetland and anything else you had to deduct out of the net density.
So how much was left before you built it and it's not?
Right. So it's not, so no, so no.
You know that.
You know that okay, doesn't have enough.
I was hearing one thing, if you had a building envelope for five houses, if weren't, didn't encroaching the wetlands, that you could do it.
That's the, you should build wherever you're able to, wherever the house will won't sink.
And when you have all the setbacks and all the.
Right, well, this building envelope needs it, and what we're, we're sure, if we delineate the wetlands, is we needed to make that point six four.
We, I still think we need to have some, some good data on that.
On, on the other lots, or what's that?
But whatever, whatever.
But, but he's saying, even if it was, even if he looked at this one blank slate and subtracted the wetlands, he wouldn't have ten acres for five lots.
So, so.
Wouldn't be left with ten acres once you subtract it all, so there's no point going through that exercise.
Right. Waiver start.
Yeah, there's another big one, that was.
That one was provided.
That would be the start, just once that.
So, if you know you can't do the net density, you're not gonna do that calculation, there's no point in going even.
See, it has all the calculations, what's left from going in there.
That's just these. So, that, that doesn't show enough from a net density. So, I mean, if, if, but if you guys know that each of these lots are, you know, two point, one, two, 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 then it's not gonna, you, you know, it doesn't make sense to even start it out.
It's, it's like a survey, every plot size is there, you're not gonna get ten acres, because it's only ten acres to begin with.
Right, so.
Hence, we wanted to have it looked at as it was originally approved, when they didn't look at that.
Right.
We're requesting a waiver. Go back to that, right?
Yeah, but that probably goes all the way back to the original approval, you had the ten acres, and you could divide into, probably tried to get five, and didn't quite make it, so.
It would have been five.
He didn't do it, because.
It was eight, four point four.
But, but with the wetlands.
There wasn't wetlands back then.
They didn't look at wetlands back then, when they originally did it.
That's the point.
Net residential density is.
Well, you can ask a waiver for it.
So, but, so what it asks.
It might not have been there in eighty seven, but I know it's there in ninety.
So, I didn't check to see what the date was that they brought net residential density. To me, if, if it was within, uh, quarter acre difference, waivers should legitimate, but if it's.
It's just a hair over four.
On that one property.
They didn't introduce that.
So, we, we have to know what's on the, all the other, if you're an acre off.
Of, of larger areas.
Well, this, this doesn't qualify, six tenths of an acre off, because they want to subdivide this, is that correct?
Right, he has enough under this division, but if you delineate these wetlands, he needs another point six four acres. Well, he doesn't have point six four or anything that's any good, until you lump off a big piece. That's the problem.
I, I can understand going back to the drawing board for the entire subdivision, if, or, we didn't already have four houses built out that had been there for decades. And it, it seems that we should be able to proceed without going through that exercise, particularly where we have a lot of pretty good guidance as far as, as what we're missing on the net density.
Fortunately, it's needed as a subdivision, though. But there's a waiver for it. We can't separate from the subdivision.
That's the way.
You don't have to.
Right. Hence the waiver.
So. Because you had the ability to waive that. Hence, we need justification on how we can waive that, right?
What would you have in the waiver?
That's what we wrote into the waiver.
Yeah, that's what.
So, I'm, I'm seeing very little justification in here, I'm seeing a request.
Okay.
Right? But I'm seeing very little justification of why. You, you know, obviously.
The D E P doesn't care, that's one.
The D E P's issue is completely separate than our subdivision.
You're saying that you have the power to waive it?
Right.
It says it.
But the D E P's, what they're looking at is, they're looking at the wetland matters.
I understand that, what he's saying is, is that the board has the right to grant, a power to grant a waiver.
Okay.
That is the justification, that the board has the power.
And I would, I would disagree with that.
I'm not saying I'm disagree, I'm not saying I agree or disagree, but that's his argument, that the board has, has the. The power to grant a re, a waiver, that power is his justification.
He needs to justify to us why he should get the waiver.
Right, I understand what you're saying, but he's saying that having the power to do it is enough of a justification.
So, what we have been doing, I feel, for the past forty five minutes, is providing justification for why we feel that waiver is appropriate. So, the board then can, within its findings, adopt the, the rationales that we've really been running through over the past forty five minutes or hour, as part of the ju, as the justification to legal basis for that waiver, and those can be adopted findings that are, that are then included within the board's findings and minutes.
And I tend to go back to Jamie's point, without knowing how much of a waiver you would actually require, I'm not sure that I feel comfortable. Is it, is it a quarter of an acre?
Well, it shows the waiver.
Hang on, hang on, is it a quarter of an acre, is it a half acre?
Point six four.
It's, it's almost seven tenths of an acre, that's a significant waiver.
So, so you've, you've heard, had, heard testimony from the property owner that it is approximately point six four acres, which is a pretty precise measurement. So, then, certainly it would be up to the board to determine whether that's an appropriate amount for waiver. Based on the totality of the circumstances, the buildout of this, of this subdivision, the fact that we have these four other houses, I, it seems to me that the unique circumstances justify, uh, that as an appropriate.
As you point out.
Please, that's his issue.
Right, and I think a part of his justification is also giving us that piece of property to take care of the issue of the right of way, and the issue we have on our property as well. I mean, that's part of their justification to allow them to give that waiver, along with that. I know we, living there, and having a house built, that, we have no problem with that whatsoever, I'm not gonna fight that, I, it's not.
So, Ted, I have a question. Can you grant a waiver, can, I know the board has the power to grant waivers, because this is kind of a nightmare, but if we have the power to grant a waiver, and we could grant him enough of a waiver so that he can consider point six four, uh.
Because technically, the.
Wait, wait, he can consider what he needs from the wetlands as part of the overall calculation, with the understanding that no, no, nothing more than forty three hundred square feet of the wetlands would be disturbed, and he's saying he doesn't have to disturb any of the wetlands, he just needs us to be able to grant, uh, or agree to the idea that he can include point six four acres as part of his overall calculation. No change to the wetlands or anything else like that.
Six four doesn't, doesn't come, you're, you're short, and you're assuming.
But I thought it was point six four that he was short.
That's where he's short.
Yep.
On that one parcel.
Yes.
Point, point six four is a very specific number, how was it arrived at?
It's on the plan.
That's what, that's how much wetlands there are in the.
Leon's on all the survey, yes.
Point six four.
So, if you're point six four, then you can give these bits there lots, and you'll be able to subdivide them.
Is this the only piece of wetlands that is out there?
No, we, we already went through that, we wouldn't have ten acres of upland, because the parcel's only ten acres, and there's wetlands in every one of those parts. That's why we're looking for the waiver, that's why we're looking at it, we viewed back in the old standards, it was originally done, when they did delineate the wetlands. Seems, you know, to drag these other lots in and try to, it doesn't work.
And technically, in the, D E P, you can get a permit to fill up to an acre of wetland, but we don't wanna ruin it, we don't wanna ruin it, we don't wanna come in with it. So, technically, we can get it done, but.
They'd only charge you four dollars a square.
Well, no, he, the permit, it wasn't, it was different, it wasn't like buying the land back from them. Because we did that with the yard, when we had to do a wall, because it encroaches a little bit, we put a wall, and all set of the wall, so you pay for that square.
Those are different.
Right, 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 yes, thank you.
Well, they just, the guy that was in here before had to fill in a little bit of the wetlands, and they charged you four dollars a square to do it.
He said under, we don't even.
He said you could fill up to forty three hundred square feet without any permit, any permit, and all that.
It's just, we don't wanna encroach on that. We just wanna build the house, and, so technically, we can fill it, we just don't want it, because it'd be bad for it.
That's kind of a subdivision, not a total.
He, and it's sort of.
So, we need to go from here.
That's my next question. I, I, but here in six, point six three acres, it.
Six four.
Six four, and where is that, is that shown on a dislocation?
That's, that's anything that's still in a, with a little pushes now.
But, it.
I think, I think, and actually, he took it all of this acre.
He actually took it from this lot, and then.
So, they're saying you've never seen anything where that's written. So, we'll come up with that.
So, this is the original lot?
Right, I don't, yes, it is on the original.
So, what's this, what's this right of way? What's this right of way?
That is, um, that's the rest of it, for the back more east.
So, is it a right of way or an east?
So, that they need the point six four in order to add up?
So, somebody else owns that?
No, I own it, well, I own this section of it, and this guy, he owns this section, and that section, my brother's.
So, it's more like an east lane, he's gotta, he's gotta.
But you just solve these people's problems with.
Access, without it being a separation.
He talked one day, he wanted to do a lot out here, well, now he's got the problem, what, what you gotta make.
Well, I mean, but this is independent, no, I agree with what you're saying, it's, clearing up their issue isn't dependent on your ability to subdivide this parcel.
We wanna do the whole thing.
Right, I understand, but their issue could be cleared up independently.
Right, but.
Well, it'd be a tremendous expense for them, because if we're not gonna be able to get the lot, uh, that's gonna cost them some money. We're willing to give it to them at this juncture, if we can get this whole thing straight in line.
Oh, so one is contingent on the other?
Yes.
Okay, so there you go, that's the answer why they can't.
That's, that's their justification for the waiver.
They kind of cut it all off.
Issues they had.
They were supposed to get the permit at the beginning.
Just a little bit.
Okay.
And this seems like easy solution.
I think we need to get an opinion from the town attorney on this.
I agree.
On the, the net density?
On the net density and the justification for the waiver.
So, what about, uh, the, looking at it from just this, the, these two lots, independently from the, the whole subdivision? What are we gonna do about that, I'm thinking, we need to consider the whole subdivision, because it is a subdivision.
It, it is a subdivision, we need to look, we're being asked to amend the subdivision, so we need to look at the entire thing.
We're being asked to, to, we're, we're being asked to change the subdivision from, from a four lot subdivision to a five lot subdivision, and that, that's alright.
Was it, was it, was it going a five off?
But we, we still have to go back to what our rule says, the net density, oh.
That's correct, and that's, that's.
It's still a subdivision.
I want Leah to, to come and give us an opinion on that.
But is there a legal basis to have it reviewed as what the standard was when it was done?
That's what she'll, provide the interpretation.
And maybe your attorney should write an opinion letter to help her see the, the issue clearly. A, what is the justification, your justification for a waiver, other than the fact that we have the power to grant one? And B, uh, you know, why you think that the prior statutes should be adhered to as opposed to what the current standard is? So, maybe you should write an opinion letter to that, so Leah knows exactly where you're going and what you want.
It may make some sense for me to actually have some conversations with Leah, because we can get in, in the game of trading opinion letters back and forth, or one sometime. And what we're really looking for is, I think the board understands is, is a pragmatic solution. And I'm happy, obviously, you know, Leah can, can speak with, with the planner, and with all of you, I completely understand that, I don't wanna interfere in, in, in what needs to go on there. But my only point is, is as opposed to trading opinion letters, it would be worthwhile for us to actually get together and, and try to, try to work out solutions that make sense for all involved.
Would that be something we could do by having the town attorney here, with all the attorneys here, instead of.
If you're in New York, I get a decision, I'm top.
No, but he would certainly get the feel for all the important houses, rather than bits and pieces, sometimes it's handy to have everybody together, once.
Boy, I know, this person listens, isn't working out, have you looked at and approached that at all?
Yeah, someone has a legal issue, yeah, someone has a mortgage that they won't release, because I think they might have some problems with the mortgage issues all around. This guy, he, Maurice, he's been great, uh, but he has a mortgage, and, uh, he doesn't even know yet whether they'll release. He's willing to do it, but the number has grown exponentially, and one of the reasons why is because a lot of his land is wetland, and so we had to go from asking for point six four, he was gonna have to give up one point four?
Four, yeah.
So, he wants to be, uh, compensated as if that was good upland. That certainly is more than a hundred thousand dollars. You couldn't do anything with that, you couldn't afford it with what the board, I mean.
Okay, well, I think it, I think at this point, you're kind of at an impasse, until we hear from the town attorney.
Well, if he says that you're able to, then, then, or she, sorry, um, then where do we?
Your, your waiver is sought under fourteen two?
Uh, he wrote it.
Yep. We'll, we'll get back to it as soon as we get here from the attorney, and let her know.
Who, who contacts the attorney, you guys are the county attorney?
Yeah, fourteen, fourteen point two is, I believe, the, the relative.
That's a, that's a waiver provision, but it looks to me like it's a waiver of a very specific thing, that is outside what you guys are looking. A provision of certain required conditions. It's not what this thing asks.
Not fourteen two.
It's fourteen one.
Is this a regular one, or is this?
Fourteen one.
Fourteen one.
Yeah, that might.
Okay, fourteen one.
Yeah, but. I know, I know.
Yeah. I would like to take some big ones back, you have.
I don't have a copy.
Once you know that.
Can we just give you what happened?
Yeah, we'll end up bringing.
Should I give you one?
Okay, so.
They were attached to waivers.
Uh, there was two more things.
I have one there.
We're kind of working traditionally with the bank, they want us to develop this.
Tough situation, I hope it all works out.
I know, I'd love to see it work out, because it could mess.
I mean, if it's, if it's in your real life, we would hope you could.
Wait, do you need to keep any of these?
That one he, uh, had in.
Yeah, that one I need to keep, um, I can get to a copy if it helps, is there any one in the town? Yeah.
That's the old one, right?
That one, did it have the new one? Does it have the new one?
What does?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, thank you very much for coming.
Thank you, we have a great, you know, it's involved. Alright, thanks again.
Alright, thank you.
Steve, thanks.
Next, next item.
Do we have a next item?
Yeah. Right, right now, section ten, six, three, six, says that if, if, if the applicant wants an extension, it's for thirty days. That creates a problem for us, because thirty days is the second meeting, because it's twenty eight days later, so for the most part, we're, we're, it's either going through the second meeting, or it's going, or they, it has to be the next meeting. Because if we do it in November, we don't see them again in November, we wouldn't have the time, boy. So, I suggest to Ted that we change that, we say the third regular meeting, whenever that happens to be.
I understand it has the effect of, of, some people get one extension for others.
Unfortunately, but they're getting them now, because we just, we allow it to go through, uh, from the November into the next period.
Okay, question, as you're saying that, Thanksgiving, Christmas, lucky if we turn a half, one meeting a month.
Right.
Okay, do you, uh, or unless there's something, hold it as a special meeting, or, I mean, what I'm trying to say is, three meetings, usually every two.
It's three regular, regularly scheduled meetings, so if we had a meeting in November, and, and somebody asked for an extension, they would have until the third meeting, which would probably be the end of January, the third regularly scheduled meeting. Because, because of the holidays, we have one regular meeting in December, and then two in January. And tho, those are unique circumstances, but I think by saying that for three meetings, if, if you meet in June, and you give them an extension, you've got until the, either the first or second meeting in July, when they have to be back in front of us, because it's, it's twenty eight days instead of thirty, so they actually end up losing. I just assume, give them some more time to, to get it together.
So, I'm gonna go back to my common theme on this topic, when we, when we went through the recent project on this. If the applicant is willing to extend our deadline for approving or denying their project, why do we need to put a arbitrary deadline on it?
Well, there, there's two reasons, the first, the first reason that thirty days showed up is because we were accused of dragging our feet, not getting things processed.
So, when the applicant is out in this, in the audience, and they say, no, planning board, I'm demanding you to do that, I'm not extending anything, you need to make a decision in thirty days, then we do that.
Yep, absolutely.
And that, if.
And that, if we are that on the fence of it, likely it's not gonna come down in their favor.
Because we're not the ones asking for the extension, only the applicant gets to ask for that.
Exactly. So why are we going to limit by the ordinance the number of extensions that they can ask for?
Oh, no, I'm not talking about limiting the number of extensions, I'm talking about the timeframe.
Up to two?
Yep. Which is what it currently says.
And that's what's continued to be proposed. I think the reason was also to make sure that, two things.
Yeah, each extension is a.
The applicant is in a dragon on the feline.
Three consecutive planning board are forty-five days.
Forty-five days, yeah.
Right.
The chair was great. I think the, the reason is, Jamie, is that the applicant doesn't string us along either. Because we've had applicants that string us along for six months or more.
Okay.
That's why.
Yep.
If you've gotten to the point where you, I mean, we should, we should judiciously label an application complete, everything should be squared away, it's almost like preliminary subdivision. All you need to do is a couple extra things and you get your final. So when you do.
I don't necessarily agree with that.
Okay.
But I mean, that's not, we've had our conversations about that.
Right, we have, we have, yeah. And, um, but the, the, the point is that it's, it's to ensure two things. Number one, the plan was not accused of dragging its feet, because it added.
Right, and that's easy to do.
The second thing is to also ensure that the applicant doesn't drag the feet. And we've had a couple of applications that did that, that went out six months or more. Actually, one went a year.
Rundle cottages took a long time.
We did?
Rundle cottages.
Oh, yeah. Well, pay, pay, that was a subdivision too. I understand that that was.
Those were both kind of unique, because we ended up, they're not overlay zones, but they're pretty close. And we had all of the work, we had the building.
Right.
Yeah, that was very complex.
But we had it, we had it with the campground, you know, for a long time, that was dragged out. Um, said B and B, we had to shut them down, because they went for six months, you know, without doing something. And, uh, and that's why. So the board isn't saddled with these one or two-year-long dragged-on.
But I think, I think, so, to me, B and B is a, is a different circumstance, because they weren't back and forth in progress, working out issues, dealing with, you know, a butter's issues, providing more information as it comes up from questions by the planning board. You know, in a way, it, it seems like if we get a, a large, um, complicated project, that we are, we're tying our hands. If the, if the applicant is willing to say, you know, we don't want you to have to stop at forty-five days and make a decision, just because that's what your ordinance says. If, if it were to take ninety days after the public hearing to hash out certain issues, to get a second opinion of something, or, you know, a rebuttal to a study, then why, why have it arbitrarily limited if the applicant is willing to allow it to be extended? And if, and, and if the applicant is consistently in front of us, not just disappear for six months.
Um, I think at the same time, you guys, your time is valuable, and the resources of the town and you to come to those meetings is important, it wants to do some protection. An applicant, and I think you would agree, an applicant has responsibility of making sure their application is tight when they come to the place. They really should have their act together.
I saw the example minutes ago of one that.
I, I think that's where we need to, to tighten up our process of determining completeness on that application. When, when we determine that it's complete, we, we're, we're saying we have everything we need to make that decision. We shouldn't be asking them for anything else after that, except for possibly in the public hearing, something may come up. But we're notorious for asking them for other stuff.
But in, in the instance this evening, it was almost deliberately vague, in terms of what they were asking for, in the way of the way.
Right, but if you, if you look at the first.
That's what Ted kept trying to qualify, what it is that they were really asking for.
But if you look at a rundle machine, they came in with everything all buttoned up.
Right, I totally agree.
Didn't have a problem, we just had to discuss.
But it was in their favor just now to be.
Deliberately vague.
Yes.
I don't, I don't agree that they're deliberately vague, I, I don't think they just fully had a handle on it. I mean, it's a complex thing, because it overlays of different regulatory schemes.
But he very clearly said, um, the owner said, um, that unless they're able to subdivide that one lot, then the fourth couple that was having the issues with the seven ten would have to pay yearly, and that issue wasn't gonna get resolved unless he got what he wanted.
Now it's a red hair.
So, you know.
A red hair.
So to me, and they didn't wanna really explain what they wanted in the way of a waiver, uh, because that was deliberately vague as well, I think, on purpose, just, I think they wanted us to believe that the fact that we could grant one was enough of justification to give them a waiver.
That's what the young fellow that was sitting here was saying.
I think we need to not discuss that out here.
That's right.
No, no, I think you're right, but, I mean, sometimes that happens too, so.
I don't know, I, I understand Jamie's point.
I do too.
Do we wanna give them, uh, an end date, or do we wanna allow them? I would, I would say eliminate the, the two extensions, allow them to come back and ask for more than two extensions. But I think they need to, to have some kind of a deadline by which they have to come back and, and provide us with the necessary information, because we've already determined it complete, we've already had the public hearing, now the ordinance says to us, we have, we have to make a decision.
So maybe they have to be actively engaged in working out, you know, look at what happened with the miniature golf. I mean, and legitimately, they were trying to get it resolved, and that sort of speaks to what Jamie is describing right now. So if, if the applicant is actively involved trying to resolve the issues of their permit, and we probably have to define what actively involved is.
But you see, I would think frankly, speaking of the deadline there, our deadline, they're pushed to, to do what they really did want to do.
Which was the lights?
Add more lights. No, it was add more lights, because that's what Jim said, you need more lights. They said, well, we do that, that's what the impasse was. So it came as, and the deadline came, they thought they said, can we hire him to fix this?
Right.
Yep.
So.
And Nurse Paul didn't even bother arguing something. And he said, we're hiring him, I'm funding him.
Yeah, well, Paul's been, it's not his first rodeo.
No, it isn't his first rodeo, who knows?
So, so, you know, the other thing, Jamie, you might, it might be a critical thing, that's, maybe you wanna rush the deadline back for planning board action. Right now it's thirty days. Another way to do this would be to extend the net, the maximum or the mandatory action date. That would be the other way to.
Right, I mean, and I would be willing to, right, do that with sixty days and then a couple of voluntary extensions. I could, I mean, I, most projects would probably, you know, be well satisfied at that point. I mean, I, I guess. I sort of go back to projects that I was involved with before I became on the planning board. And I remember a couple of, you know, more complicated, more contentious projects that went on for months, you know, six to twelve months, before a final approval, just because of whatever, and, you know, as, you know, my concern is, as a rundle grows and potentially gets more pressure for development, are we gonna get a larger scale project that's gonna come in? And we are gonna be, you know, sitting here with attorneys that know their crap from a, from a land use standpoint, and, you know, are really gonna be, you know, applicants that are gonna be frustrated, because we've gotta come up with an, you know, pretty much a decision without the process playing out.
And, well, from, from my point of view, I, I hadn't thought about extending it more than the thirty days, I just thought about allowing them to have the extensions, and it was more based on when we're meeting as opposed to any kind of a timeframe. I would have no problem at all if we said sixty days, and, and then allow them to have multiple extensions. I do think at some point, we have to say, okay, so we've had the public hearing, and we went for a sixty-day period of time, and then you've asked me for five extensions, and we're now, yeah, months after the public hearing. At some point, we have to say, that's enough.
Right, I mean, yeah, you've gotta, you've gotta draw the line and distinguish between a, an ongoing project that's trying to resolve issues and a dormant project.
But I, I, like I said, I wouldn't have a problem saying sixty days, I mean, it doesn't matter what that, that's our timeline. And, and it, you know. Well, it is our timeline, we can, we, because right now, we're, we have thirty days to make a decision, we could very easily say sixty.
Well, I, you know, I, I'm having, I'm having fiberglass right now. I wonder if that's gonna apply to me, sixty days, when we lost double the time they paid, sixty days.
And how does that reflect on people who would have had to have, who have had decisions made under all five constraints?
We've had one person have, have to use two extensions.
No, two. No, you're right, no, at least two.
Was it two?
Yeah.
I can only think of one right now.
Um, what? That was the latest.
Yeah, it's imprinted in my head.
Yeah. But that's my only concern, I mean, I had no problems with sitting out the ten, eleven of time. Can we get it past the votes? Who like to see the planning board do less than us? I mean, the, the road committee knocked down the staff review committee time to like seven days, period. We had seven days to do everything. I can't do that, you know, I, I can't do that, that's what you got to do. Well, I'll be voting no, denial, if I don't have enough time to, to do something. Or we don't, we don't need our, our obligations, our qualification, and our published, we have to do obligations and so forth. I have to send out notices to all of these guys, and there is an administration. But, so that's the question, I mean, you wanna do three? You need the three of those extensions? I mean, if you can't do that, basically, what we're talking about is, what we're looking at, we're talking ninety days, we add another forty-five days to that, I mean, that's, that's getting, where DEP's supposed to get their job done, right? Site location, haven't supposed to be done by that.
I mean, in, the trouble is, a, a ordinary run-of-the-mill project, you're never gonna get into this kind of situation.
No.
And that's ninety percent of the projects. But it's, you know, this is put in for the special circumstance.
You could say it's for, for phased projects, for complex projects, you could send out phased projects, because anything that you're talking about would probably be phased projects.
Well, I like phased better than complex, because all of a sudden, that's.
It's an arbitrary.
It's right, yes.
But phased would, if we ran into another, let's say we ran into a condo development at the golf course, which may come back at some point.
Mm-hmm.
You know, that's gonna be complex, because there'll be several phases, that we approve the whole master.
Why are you getting bogged down with that kind of, where you have to make that kind of a decision? Why, why can't we have something that is, uh, just, just discretionary?
Well, because we have that thirty-day, I mean, we've got an act of thirty days of public hearing. Well, we should change that though, because that's, Paul has pointed that out many times, that, that thirty days starts after, uh, oh, sometimes before the public hearing.
Yeah.
No, it starts, it starts right after.
After the public hearing, okay, and then they hear something that shouldn't be changed, they still have only thirty days.
Yeah.
So if, thirty days into extensions, into extensions.
So that's, so that's talking ninety days after, after the public hearing.
Sometimes there's, there are, might be other things.
So, I mean, if it's requested by the applicant, it can be extended in the discretion of the board. Why can't we have something that is straightforward, it's user-friendly to the applicant, and it's, we act as judges?
And, and I say the way to sell it is, we want to try and push forward the public hearing process earlier into the, into the, the whole mix of things, versus when it is, all the planning board has already looked at everything and is ready to almost make a decision.
Well, then it would be, then you would change the order. You would change the order that the public hearing's gotta be held, um, and the, the decision with thirty days from determining the application is complete. So the public hearing would not have anything to do with the, with the application being determined complete. That might solve the problem.
I like that.
That, that you've got basically, um, that. But, but, I see, the only downside with that, I'm not, I'm not opposed, but there are, we've had many applicants come to us and then never followed through, so where, where is it considered legitimate to schedule a public hearing?
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't deserve to bake the cake fully before they.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Well, here's the good thing, if you have a controversial project, and a good example would be Oak, Oak, uh, Oak Ridge Terrace, which is a new subdivision, over off of Baldwin Lake Road by, uh, Mrs. Susskind. That brought out people in droves.
Oh, yeah.
And that was just a concept. Those people are gonna be tracking this project all the way through. And the only reason that happened was because I notified those people as soon as I got the application. So I, I would, I have a suggestion, could be discretionary up to us when we can schedule a public hearing, we always have to wait till, till certain points. Can we just say, I think we should have a public hearing, we just, that'll be my judgment?
I'm not sure that that's fair to the applicant, because we may, we may decide to have it early, we may decide to have it late, I think the applicant needs to know it's going to occur at this point in time, either when you submit the application, or when we deem it complete, or at some other point. Let the applicant know exactly when that public.
I think doing a public hearing, scheduling the public hearing upon deeming the application complete is, is fair. Because that, you know, at, at that point, everything is there. Now, that being said, I think, and we're sort of getting off topic, but I think a butter should be notified when we have a site.
Ted, Ted and I have talked about that, he's notifying them when we have the site watchers, notifying them when the application comes in, so that they.
No, for subdivision.
For subdivision.
I'm not doing it for site plan, I'm not doing it for conditional use, it's a lot of work, guys.
Okay, yeah, but for, for site, for subdivision, yes, when, when that comes in, they need to be notified, because this is in their neighborhood.
Um, yeah, and I, if we have early notification, codify that in the ordinance, then basically, you have to ask, that's when we make an official, an official application, not a pre-app. Pre-apps, I mean, pre-apps go away, you know, we had three or four pre-apps go away, I mean, we need to finish the site off before it disappears. So, um, that might be a way to do it, would be that we notify them as soon as the application goes, but we still, the question is, do we still need a public hearing? I think, I think still shows that we do.
Yes.
And do you want it before or after completion? Because there is a legitimate beef by the public, saying, wow, the application's pretty much all set, the public was ready to make an act, and take action on this, now you're asking us to, that's late date.
That's why I think, that's why I think that when they give us an application, everybody should be notified, not the pre-app, you're right, because those things, they come in and they disappear, or they come in and say, I just had, I got one question, I feel like Columbo, I got a question, just, just one more thing.
We'll take America.
Yeah.
So, we'll take this one, taking the subdivision.
But from a, from a legal standpoint, the application doesn't have standing until we deem it complete.
Well, how about this, how about a two, how about a two-tiered system for determining it complete? Staff gives a preliminary determination, then the public hearing, and then we act to determine whether it's complete.
Because there may be something coming out of the public hearing that.
Yeah, that's the only, that's the only thing.
But that's why, you're not, when that's why, when, that goes exactly to my point. Then, i- if that comes out, then maybe at that point, we determine, well, we can't determine complete, because there are these bona fide concerns that have emerged as a result of the public hearing.
Yep, so, in that case, then you're still talking about doing it.
Putting, right. Putting more, putting, maybe it's putting more on your plate, but...
But if you wanna make me the gatekeeper.
Yeah.
Well, would you? Then...
Right.
But an application can be complete without an approval of the public hearing. I mean, somebody brings us an application, and we find that all the information that we requested is there. It may not be answered the way we want it, but it is there. It is a complete application.
No, I, I kinda like Enz's, Enz's perspective on it. You know, you, you've given us the application, we'll hold a public hearing, and if there's a lot, if Billy Stilfen shows up with, with all of, all of the brute proof from his neighborhood, now we have other stuff that we have to consider. So, we're not gonna deem the application complete. We're gonna take into consideration everything. And then we could've said, well, we're gonna have to have the noise study, we're gonna have to have all of this other stuff. And once we get all of that, we can deem it complete and move forward from there. I, I think that's...
Yeah, it's just like lawyers, when they're having a jury trial or anything else. It doesn't go to the jury until everything is, when it's completed. I mean, uh, and then it's, a decision is...
Yeah, I, I happen to think that's what I get.
Well, you can do, what, how about this? You can do thirty days, within thirty days of the application first accepted by the planning board, by board's hold of the public care. And then, within, and then you say the, the planning board then makes a determination of completeness within... You don't have a deadline in determination of completeness. Actually, that's the way, actually, a lot of towns do.
Yeah.
Now, that's where you can run string of affirmation, um, forever. Uh, we need this, we need that, we need this, we have, all the public hearing showed this, and that's both good and bad.
Well, you see, I, I think once, once we've, if we, if we go that way, once we've had the public hearing and all of that information has come out, we just give the applicant a punch list and say, you have to satisfy all of this stuff, and you've got X number of days to do it. Now, if you can't get it done in that period of time, we say, you've got forty-five days. Now, if you can't get it done within forty-five days, you can ask for an extension. But if you don't ask for an extension in forty-five days, we're both one way or the other.
Okay, let's go with this, so...
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Okay.
So, to my, if my memory serves me right, the only, the only issue I have with that is, I was, I was always under the impression that until we deem the application complete, that's when the, the application gets bona fide legal standing. And they're protected and are able to be reviewed under the ordinances that are in place at the time.
Um, actually, I've been taking it as soon as you submit me an application and go before the planning board. There's a process here, Robert.
What I'm saying is if somebody were to challenge a project in an attempt, in, in an attempt to challenge it, they were to bring forth a citizen's petition to not allow fast food restaurants in the town of Aron. Then, if one was proposed, if we waited to deem it complete, they would have a window of time to push forth an ordinance if they got the right ear of the selectmen or whoever that could do it in order to make that happen, to disallow something that they didn't wanna see.
I'm not sure they couldn't determine something complete is any different than actually having a bona fide application for the plan. From my perspective, I'm one hundred percent...
There's somebody that probably would give you, could give you an opinion on that.
Yeah. Well, we did that with Phil Abbey, if you recall. Phil Abbey, Phil Abbey never finished his, his ledger. I mean, the first time, right?
Right.
Uh, never submitted his final materials, and then we changed his own, and the comp planning committee, the AR, actually, you guys did, and then sent the comp planning committee, and the recommendation was that there be no, no residential subdivisions in the AR district, it's a business district. They don't have a lot of residential subdivisions. Those was a residential subdivision. He had to get, he had to get his application in. He got his application in two or...
Three days.
Few days before town meeting.
Three days, yeah.
Three days before town meeting. So, he got it in, you guys accepted the application, you accepted the application subject consideration.
Now, question.
Now, the question is, Jamie's right, and that can be challenged. I mean, you didn't act on it.
Right.
I'm not sure determining it complete is the active idea, you didn't give them a footprint.
No.
You just couldn't make it complete.
Well, ultimately, I mean, I'm drawn from...
Personal experience.
Right, a contentious project, I was involved in.
Yeah, it's important.
And that was the, that was the measuring stick that I was under the impression of at the time. Once that was determined to complete and proceeding through the process, then that was the set of regulations that the, the project was going to be assessed by.
Now, that's a, another interesting question. I don't know. I know how I've always interpreted it, because I've had the same thing happen to me that happened to you. And, um, so I, maybe that's a question we ask Leah. What, what mechanism do we need to ensure that somebody submits an application to us? That they're not going to be impacted by a sudden change in the ordinance?
Right. No, I don't either, and that's why, and why do you have to be concerned about that?
Because ordinance, if an ordi, if we're...
Do we wanna get litigated on that? Do we wanna get charged? What would happen? Okay, what Jamie's talking about is in an event such that, that we say, no, he's in the process. Let's say it's Phil. Let's say Phil, Phil's an example. You know, Phil puts it in, and the butter says, whoa, no, 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 no. He didn't get his approval prior to the town meeting when they changed that ordinance. They said, you can't do this project. And he challenged us. Now we have to pay, now we have to pay, um, to defend ourselves in court when it's not specifically specified in the ordinance.
I suspect that, um, that's not a unique question.
No, I probably guess.
No, I'll bet that's been really good.
Yeah.
I think I'd ask.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's what I'm thinking, and I think, I think Leah would be able to have a very quick, concise answer for us.
Right, so that's item two on the list.
Okay. Question, when do you say an application is, when they submit their...
I'm not certain. Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's, I mean, you can put an application...
It's not, it's not when they do it, I mean, it's when you're on the agenda.
Right.
No.
I consider when you're on the agenda. You get it in, and you're on the agenda, that's when it's official.
Yeah, but then, now, can the planning board chair decide it's gonna play like the commissioner? Say, well, six months.
You know, these questions, if they still, you have to pay their check before they even pay a check.
They don't get on the agenda, they don't pay.
Right, so, we could drag our feet on putting them on the agenda as well.
We could.
We could. We may submit that, write a check, or...
Should we define, um, and I hate to be the one who's always asking for definitions. Do you think people misunderstand that an application being complete with it being blessed? Um, so, in other words...
I want the word semitic.
I like...
Well, what you can do with an applica, I'll, I'll tell you this, I've seen it, but I'm, we've got, I don't know here, but also, I had it done today, where an application was deemed complete by the planning board. They said, we have enough information to make a reasonable decision. Decision is denied. So, if there's no magic to deeming an application complete, doesn't mean you've got an approval. It means we've got all the information we need to make a decision when we're making them, and it can be denied.
Okay, so, I think we've, we've gone way down a rabbit...
I think I'd really agree.
And, and if we go back, I, I don't have a problem if we change the, the... Uh, applicants may submit a written request of the, uh, run the planning board for up to two extensions in order to amend it after the public hearing and prior to the issuance. I think each extension should be for no, no longer than three consecutive regular planning board meetings. Otherwise, we meet every week right now, every other week with the comp plan. I don't want somebody saying that constitutes one of these meetings.
So, we're sticking with that, we're gonna revamp the whole process? Is that, we just went through this.
Well, no, I, I, I think, I think we, we could go through and revamp that whole process.
But I think Paul's point is well taken.
But we got way off on a, on a rabbit trail. I, I don't care if we change the, the, the time of the public hearing to sixty days or if we figure out some other way to do it. I was, this was more aimed at, do we give them an extension? From the time at which we, we would normally have to rule, do we give them an extension?
I think it's fair to.
It depends on circumstances.
I don't like the forty-five days, simply because the forty-five days is not gonna fall. It's gonna fall in the middle of a, of a week, and we don't have a meeting.
But if you look at, if you look at, I, I looked at the worst-case scenario, not November, or not December. I looked at the one where we had a big gap, a two-week gap, and that was forty-two days.
Right.
Yeah. I would just look to do forty, forty-five, take out the three consecutive planning board meetings and just do forty-five days. That, that gets us more than, you know, sometimes it might fall right there on the hairy edge. But, you know, ultimately, most of the time, it's gonna at least give us two weeks.
But what happens in December and, and November, especially if, if we have the normal... Normally, we only have one meeting on both those months.
Oh, I'm gonna have to defer to a legal line. If the ordinance says forty-five days, and we, and we make the decision on the forty-second day, are we denying the applicant due process if he doesn't have all of this time? Because the, the ordinance says forty-five days?
Well, I guess it just takes one, one to...
Right. That, that's my concern with forty-five days.
That's why I think building in some discretion is...
Uh, here's another question to ask you. Okay, we have, say, regular meetings.
But we have it in there for no, for forty-five days.
But what the fact is, you have weather, where meetings have to be careful.
So, it's a special meeting.
How does that fall?
Because the forty-fifth day's gonna end up on Sunday.
But it's, but if your regular scheduled meeting is on a...
The Thursday before.
Thursday before, yeah.
Then you're no longer the forty-five day.
And if you have regular scheduled meeting only once, one in November, and once in December, then it's not forty-five days.
That's true.
Because that's why it says, for the greater.
We're having this discussion because we are, we, we're getting bogged down with one particular time of the year. Because if that's the case, and it's otherwise working, why don't we just address the specific problem? Instead of trying to...
No, see, it's, the problem isn't the last two months. The problem is those, those times when you get... We usually have it every two weeks, but then there's those months where it's a week in between. So, it's three weeks, and then they don't, they only, they don't have enough time to get it fourteen days prior to...
Like, January into February would have been a classic example.
So, maybe we should just write in libraries that adjusts itself through the various, um, calendar aberrations for the end of the year, uh...
That's why we did three pre-consecutive planning years.
Do you think that, is that, is that...
I mean, I think that...
What about weather permitting?
Fixes the problem entirely?
So, that issue should... But it doesn't fix, it doesn't fix the problem of, of where we start this clock. I mean, and the problem that's come up tonight is, when do we punch that clock?
That's true, and that's...
That's really the issue that Jamie's brought up, is, is it fair to punch the clock at completion? Um, and is public hearing serving both the applicant and the public in its current location in the timeline? Should it not be earlier? Should it not even, should the determination of completeness not be triggered by the public hearing? And that's what I got out of this, was the public hearing should be, should not be the trigger. It should go in the planning board makes a determination, you gotta be there. And that's where you get discretion. That's really discretionary.
And if, if we did it based on, we have everything that we need, we would not need extensions. Why would we need extensions? We hold a public hearing, get all of the information, tell the applicant to bring us back all of the stuff, we now have everything we need. They may or may not like the outcome, but we have everything that we need.
The downside of that is you're prolonging the timeframe in which an applicant get, has legal standing.
Well, we tell, we, we say to them, you've got forty-five days to get the application back, get us a completed application.
But do you wanna deem it complete before or after the public hearing?
I'll be, I mean, what I'm hearing is after.
I would think after, because you might hear things in the public hearing.
Yeah, I think so.
That would alter your opinion as to whether or not the application is complete.
When, when Jim issues a building permit, that's, that's an act that, that can trigger a challenge.
Yes, it's thirty days to, to appeal to the...
Right, so, at that point, um, they're standing both for the person who's trying to get something accomplished and whoever among the butters or others have standing, so to object to it. So, that's, that's that point in time where it has legal standing, right there. It seems to me, uh, that is analogous to the suggestion of the staff review approval being that same point in time. If we have that preliminary staff approval, or not approval, but determination of preliminary, preliminary determination completeness, then we have a public hearing, and then, and then we, as a board, determine it complete. Based on what you've provided to us, and whatever in, additional information or considerations that we might have following the public hearing.
What that does, and I understand what you're saying, what it does is it also creates me as a regular in this situation. I don't have a problem with that, 'cause I do that on staff.
You do that behind the scenes anyway, the way you educate us.
But, the point is, is there an appeal to me? I, and you're not getting on the plan, because you don't have all this stuff here. You haven't filled out this application, so I'm not gonna let you get on the plan. What if an unscrupulous plan, or just to sit there and play games, and say, no, you don't have everything I need. And you just, this, this, this...
We, we don't think that's gonna happen, and if, and if it does, then good, they should gun for him.
Okay.
We can't, we can't fix all problems.
No, you can't. No, it's just, that's, that's the only, that's the only concern I have. Somebody who wants to make an in-and-run-around the plan has an option to in-run to the planning board.
Well, we had done that at one point. We had said that you were the person that deemed the application to be complete. And the fellas down the road gave us all kinds of grief about that.
Oh, did you? I got a lot of grief, because you guys got more grief, because I was the gatekeeper. And so, we loosened up after that, to the point where this, that, that...
And I would, I would have no problem going back to that, if you had no problem going back to that.
Yeah, I, I, I think that makes sense.
Well, I think there's gotta be some level of scrutiny by staff before things come to the planning board.
And usually, usually you do have everything. I mean, usually, and I advise, well, what I do is I advise the chairman, this isn't ready to apply.
Right.
Right.
And, but when I have a situation like the last one, which is, I want all these waivers.
Right.
I'm not in a position to say, okay...
You know, I was expecting a whole lot more waivers than that.
Um, well, I didn't know, I didn't get them till tonight. I mean, I got them at the same time you got them.
Yeah.
So, that, that's almost, that's almost an example, saying, no, you didn't give it to us in advance, so we can actually make... I mean, it's important for them to have the, the fore to be able to make their case. But the planning board should not, should have information in advance instead of trying to perform. We just spent forty-five minutes trying to learn.
That, that should've been in front of us two weeks ago.
Well, they didn't get the stuff done until tonight.
So, is this, is this revision...
And I thought the attorney was from the surveyor. That's why I asked him those questions, because he's...
I had that.
You had, I'm glad you did.
What, what is...
Who are you?
Yeah. What, so is this revision, proposed revision, looking to be on this upcoming June?
If you guys wanna do it. But if you wanna change that, then at the next meeting, you want to put something together.
I guess what I would suggest, we've talked a whole lot about changes to processes and stuff.
Right.
I, I think it would be wise to get, have a, I mean, five-minute conversation with Leah on what the, what are the pros and cons of this, what's already been, you know, gone through case law, that type of thing, to know what the precedent is. You know, so we're just not going out there and then somebody saying, oh, you guys screwed up, it's completely illegal.
Then we get going through the other board again.
Well, I don't want, I don't want something coming about like we've had where we ended up being accused of being biased and whatever else then. I mean, uh, where we went through legal, illegal, and legal. I mean, uh... We didn't drag our feet, it was other people dragging their feet, but we were still put to blame on this, otherwise.
Yeah, I'm not sure that we can do anything about that.
No, 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 I'm just, I'm just saying. But if we turn around and address it this way, but my other question is a long way which nobody's addressed, is that, okay, what about, you say, we'll say three meetings, like, we're talking about... about, you say, we'll say three meetings, like, we're talking about, what happens if meetings are canceled through weather? Now how does, where does that fall?
That would not be a consecutive meeting.
Huh?
That would not be a consecutive meeting, because it was canceled, it was never held. Same thing could happen if we don't have a court.
Right.
Okay, I mean.
It should not be in the applicant's back.
It should not be.
I mean, that, that addresses the question, I mean, uh.
You know, if you guys, if, I, I kinda like Jamie's suggestion of doing the, determining the application complete after the public hearing, so that we have enough time to go through. If we determine that it's complete after the public hearing, we don't need to be looking at extensions.
No.
And, and asking for those extensions, so I think it would be just as easy to change it to say, we're, the determination of completeness will occur after the public hearing, so that we have enough time to get feedback, and then they can go out, if they have to get us more stuff, then they're not, it's not a complete application.
That would mean, I mean, just, just something to think about too, just for a second. That would mean that if we have like condo, that's conditional use, they would have to have their home roof association documents all done.
Hold on.
Right, dude, and that's an expensive process, it can, it's a boil, but it can.
Believe it.
As soon as he said that, I just went, who is kidding, Ted?
It's, 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 no, no, it's expensive for the applicant, not so much for the attorney.
Well, look, that, that, that's an expensive project.
It is.
So, it, it, by no means the most expensive element, so.
I, I don't have a problem, that's, because you're gonna have to have that done before we get everything else completed anyway, so.
All right, so I will, I will put together a scenario, and I will also ask two questions to Leah, what constitutes an application, an application being in review?
Right.
And what is the second, the second one?
When is it, when does it right, or, what, what, what does it attain standing, right, or rightness?
Well, that's basically, that's, yeah, and the other, the other one is on this applicant, you know.
Uh, him, now, but I mean, we're going to the process.
Oh, the process? I think that was it.
Well, I mean, well, I mean, ultimately.
Ask Leah, have her answer.
Yeah.
Yes, there was, I wrote it down, I, I give him the reference to, um.
Pay it.
No, that's what we did.
Was the person? I'll find it eventually.
Uh, my other question is, what happens if we have a complex project coming up or anything else, and we want input from the public, and sometimes you never get anything because there's too many couch potatoes, that we have more than one public hearing?
You can have multiple public hearings, there's nothing to say that you can't have more public hearings. And what, what we do is, we need the state statute in terms of notifying the public of an official public hearing. You wanna have more public hearings, certainly can do that.
What I'm just saying is.
You don't have to advertise the additional ones.
Yeah, we can have, we have the first one, everybody know, and then if, when they bring us back all the information, and we decide that this is everything that we need, we could have a second one to answer the question.
Yeah, so significantly, yeah, because that's the last one. You can do that without advertising the paper, because, I mean, I was gratified to hear that, that Greg, um, next, Greg Tansley is a planner, they've stopped advertising all the week. I had lunch with him a couple of weeks ago, and I said, why are you advertising in the first place? There's nothing in statute that requires you to do that, all you have to do is advertise to the public hearings. So, that's, you know, the, the, the issue of public hearings being disseminated and advertised in the paper as a way of getting, of notifying the public is, has, those days are gone, and nobody reads, the clipping services are gone, you know, and, and, nobody goes there, really, they, it hasn't mattered what posting it around the market thing, you have, putting it in the paper.
So, am I correct, we should have Ted?
Talk to Leah.
Talk to Leah, and then depending, dependent on what Leah says, he can report to us next week, because we may very well just decide to have a public hearing on changing the, when we have the public hearing?
Next week.
Okay.
Next week, because, you know.
April eleventh.
Yeah, next week, I've got my own, I have other things I've got to do, and which one we'll discuss afterwards.
Okay, all right, and then there's, this is, this was from Ted, so, this is the amendment to the residential sub, uh, resi- suburban residential district R two.
R two?
Yeah, with that change.
I'm sick of Jim writing on my maps, because he does that all the time. It's big circle knob there, with the big question mark. Apparently, he's got better institutional knowledge than I do, but apparently, the plan board talked about, including Hidden Meadows subdivision, which is a three-lot subdivision, off of, um, Mountain Road, it's a little knob that sticks out, it actually crosses the gas line.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
No, no, it doesn't necessarily cross the.
Crosses the gas line.
Oh, that, because that was Sean Doucet's.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, but originally, that's how they were used, the, uh, when Sean owned it.
Yeah.
But turn around when they, the, uh.
Secrets coming out.
The cottages, that's when they turned around. Came into it, because it was a gas line, because otherwise, it wasn't allowed to be usable.
It's only three lots. It's a very large. It's open space, it's a very small chunk. Um, I think Sean had aspirations to develop more in the future, but then he got a good deal from Sean, so that's what happened. But it's now in the BI district, not all the lots are developed, there's still one more to be developed, but right now, they're non-conforming, because they're in the BI district, the BI district does not allow residential uses, as you know.
Did it, did it change, was it R two at one point, and then inadvertently got put into BI?
No, I'm not sure what it was, I think BI, I think it was R two at one point, and DI came along and made it easy, and just ran down that.
Right down the corridor.
Right down that, that eastern side.
Is this, is this here, is this where?
Yeah, that's a little bump out on the map.
Okay, originally, when Sean built that, that was residential. Okay, and, and that is before turn, uh, the BI even per se came around.
Right. So, what, what we wanna do, what needed to be done, I mean, the planning board at that time, I guess Aaron had talked to the planning board about changing that, and I guess it never happened, never went to town meeting, never got to change the map, I'm working on the maps this spring, and I'm sick of Jim moving circles on my zoning map saying, what are you gonna do about this thing? And so my objective and my request to the board was, let's pull these guys in the R two, where they were always supposed to be.
When did the BI go in?
When did the BI go in, was that like, uh, two thousand and like four or five? No, five.
No.
Just under five.
First. That, that's when, that's when the comprehensive plan, through, through, uh, supposedly, a big bone to, you know, we're gonna make it so much business, and that's when John De Kindred and everything else was there, I mean, uh, but, um, I never knew that Hidden Meadows, okay, because it was, uh, in the BI district, because the natural gas pipeline was, was part of the breakoff. I mean, uh.
As you can see, it's, 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 it's in a collusion, it's.
No, because.
Sticking in there. Now it is.
No, because the BI district, you weren't allowed to build residential.
Exactly.
And, and this was done, he built before the BI.
Right.
Okay, so it, so that's what I'm trying to say, the ground, you was, Hidden Meadows came first.
They came first, and let's, let's get them, let's get the non-conforming staffs.
So I, I think we should just send this to a public hearing, so that we can get it put on a warrant, could you?
Don't forget, yeah.
Go. I, I mean, I.
Need to say a motion for that?
Make a motion to put it, to do so.
Okay, is there a second? Motion is made in the second, to put this on the, uh, to hold a public hearing, so that we can put this on the warrant?
When are we holding a public hearing?
There's no rush on this, is there?
We have to try to get this to Jim, during town meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
On the eleventh?
Okay.
Uh, no.
Nope.
Can't do the eleventh, I do need fourteen days for that.
Twenty-fifth.
We do, do it on the twenty-fifth.
Okay. Have it on the twenty-fifth.
On the twenty-fifth.
Gotta check to see if we have any, we're gonna have contractor yards on for the twenty-fifth, right?
Yep.
We've got those two knocked off of this pathogen.
Oh, yeah, you think so? Oh, this, I thought you meant the contractor yards.
No, we're gonna have to this at all.
And then the second thing, I, and maybe there's not enough time, I was looking at and saying, this is the stupidest lot line I've ever seen, it has the R one, R two lot lines, and look, they're, they're out of space, they're cutting lots in half, totally useless. And the reason why is because on our GIS three-five at that time, it's really easy to put a buffer from a road, and say, a thousand feet, try to automatically, a thousand feet from the road, and there's my lot line, I don't, I mean, there's my zone line, I don't have to worry about it. The problem is you're cutting all these lots, small lots in some cases, into little pieces.
For, for, for example, uh.
Yeah, well, you can see right here, I mean, what I had proposed was to, to run the lot line of the zoning line along an existing property. That's the dashed line that you see. But I, I do a lot of, of places that, that we could start doing that, so I'm afraid we'll just start doing it, like.
No, I keep changing the map.
Just, just east of there, where the big wetlands is, is the BI to R one.
Yeah.
We're, we're, we're cutting across a bunch of properties there.
Give me more to R one.
Well.
That's more restrictive.
Is it causing a problem the way it is?
Not, not from one.
Are there any problems with the way it is?
No, well, it's just, it's, it's, it's not, and that's, I'd like to be the owner of the lawn lot there that, that's cut in half by this thing.
Well, well, you did the same thing, you did the same thing when you did, uh, uh, DV one and DV two.
Yeah.
How many lots you cut?
Yeah, we did, and the whole objective of doing that was to avoid having to go to the complaint committee, if you recall.
No.
Didn't work, yes, it was, that's what it was.
I argued against that.
I know you argued against it, but I'm telling you what my motivation for that was.
It was your motivation.
That's what I said.
No, you said our motivation.
And, well, the, well, the plan board agreed with me, obviously, I don't wanna say.
No, not everybody did.
Not everybody, but the majority did.
Yeah, but if I'm, turn around, I'm, uh, affected by, uh, Route one.
So you're gonna put it on for the twenty-fifth?
We're gonna do that.
Yes, please.
Actually, Martin's gonna get more, because R one is less restrictive than R two, but right now, R one and R two are restricted for market purposes as a.
Side marks.
Because he only can do five animal events.
That's right.
Which we're trying to fix, which leads us right.
Which we're not getting anywhere with that.
Well, we'll segue into that in a minute.
Take it away.
No, I, does the board want me to pursue that, or do you wanna not pursue that? Because I'm gonna be changing the maps this June, so I need to know, and I wanna change them again, and again, and again, and again, and again.
Well, you don't have enough to do?
No, I think, I think for right now, just, just leave it the way it is, we can, we can take some time.
No, you get too many things at town.
No, 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 I'm, I'm talking about sometime.
Don't bet on it.
Sometime after the town meeting, maybe in the summer, or in the fall, if things slow down, we can work on looking at the maps, in the meantime.
So this is where the, is the town hall, right, isn't that the town hall in Portland?
I bet you it's paper cul-de-sac.
Uh.
Oh, that's a paper cul-de-sac.
Yeah, it's got a.
It is.
Now, also a question, turn around, where you have Hidden Meadows, okay?
The fire to Oregon.
And everything else. How does that work with, uh, somebody who wants to, uh, haul bill or whatever else that's coming out onto his property?
Well, that's interesting you bring that up, because that's, was one of the things in my town, my town planner's report.
I didn't read your town planner report.
I haven't given it yet. The, uh, the town manager, uh, would like to get some, we're gonna be talking to Joe, about Joe wants to go out and knock road. All his, uh, construction equipment this summer. The town manager sat down and said, what's the, what are the issues? Because I know what our issues are, what you have for issues, and I said, well, safety. And the planning board said, no, no traffic coming out of our mountain road. Now, the people at Hidden Meadows loved the idea, because Joe's gonna pave the road for it, which they didn't like that, and they'll live the truck drive. Problem is that mountain road, of course, I don't know, I wasn't there for the preliminary process, you know, I was only there for the final, but the, I don't know what kind of commitments you guys made to people on mountain road when they first proposed the undernapping.
We, we didn't, we, we said, you can have mountain road for emergency vehicles only. And there was no debate about it, we didn't go anywhere, we said, that's it.
I remember.
Yeah, you may be right, I, I think we may have brought up the issue.
We brought it up because of the fire.
We don't want the ambulance going all the way down a Route one, when it's right up the street.
They didn't want that road back there anyway.
That's why they dragged your feet for so long.
Okay, well, interestingly enough, well, you need two means of egress, because the road is over twenty-five lots, or, excuse me, twenty-five, it's over two-hundred-and-fifty trips per day, so it automatically has to have two, two connections, and then live connections, not emergency, but we'll go into that. But the simple fact is that, um, I had told the, the chairman, I've told Keith, basically, look, whatever you do, uh, remember that, you just gotta go in the mend is, is permitted with the planning board. And Roger had raised the, uh, he had reposted weight limitations on mountain road, and I don't disagree with him, because two things, mountain road's quadrupled, it's extremely dangerous, it's too narrow, it's also bike group one, nobody seems to know that this is, is US bike group one, it is on the federal maps as a surface road bike path, federal bike path.
Since when?
Money for it, since the DOT designed it, and DOT designated.
Mountain road?
Yep. That's what that, you'll see those, you'll see those little signs with one in it, that's bike group one, goes down mountain road, goes down Downing Road.
You mean, they did that before Eastern Trail?
They did that after Eastern Trail.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, is, you're just gonna let your boy, we didn't get sucked up enough into the Eastern Trail, so now we have to turn and play with the.
It's the feds. You accept federal money, we accept federal money. They always have cabs, and what are the cabs that are saying, we'll put in our roads, or, or bike group. I didn't even have to ask.
It just designated.
It is what it is, and that's, that's something that.
That's something to be considered, and if you go on mountain road, like I, I do quite a bit regularly, uh, there's a lot of cycles on the.
Okay, but which way are they, which way did Joe wanna go?
Well, it's gonna go west.
No, if he comes through Hidden Meadows.
Right, he's gonna go right, he's going out, he's going to, uh, Bitterford, he's going to the exit, you forget about that.
Oh, okay, that's what I was just trying to see, which way, because he, that's also gonna go in, into Bitterford.
That's why, something else I mentioned.
So I wonder what that's gonna cost him to upgrade.
If, if we were to have a public.
It's a good bond.
If we were to have a public hearing, it'd be a lot of work position.
Oh, yeah, that's, oh, I figured that. Yep, so when he comes to us, we'll hold a public hearing, we'll find out what everybody feels like, and then we can say, oh, no, 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 you can, you can, you can bond the maintenance of it, upgrade it to its greatest.
Well, I'm saying, because I told Joe, until, until, you know, bless him, from Roger, we're not gonna be doing complaints, but we'll just say, until the town, town, uh, public works director says it's okay, and the council says, the selectmen say it's okay, well, it works, I mean, consider, we're not gonna saddle that.[1685.41]
Well, the other, the other thing is unless, turn around, they proceed, uh, follow through, but it wasn't convenient that turn around and have to, where the pit is, they're filling with all the rocks as a access onto Route one for, uh, going to Bitterford.
Yeah, well, that's all, that's all, it's pretty much all.
Yeah, what I'm saying is another.
They don't want to come through, Marty. They want to go in the back. They don't want to come through all those new houses, that's what, basically. They didn't really design it with construction entrance in mind.
Being to themselves.
And I quite, yeah, it's self-complimentary, although I did try to negotiate a deal with KKW to use their access road. And they were willing to do that, but they'd still have to go through phase three and phase four in order to take the material down. Now, luckily, there's less ledge, there's five, I thought.
Well, like you said, that's, that is pretty much a self-complimentary.
What about, what about Joe Fannett? He was, he wanted to go through, down to his way at one time, coming through. We, we talked about it.
About Fannett, what?
Turn around, coming out that way instead of coming down through Hidden Meadows, go down right to his way.
I've heard nothing about that. Hasn't been called a lot. Um, the only other thing I'm gonna bring up is what the chairman leaves.
Oh, no, I'm just.
Is, uh, is the, uh, the issue of, of our progress on the R one district regulations, which we're desperately hoping after four years to, to get before town meeting, if, if you guys, at a town meeting. We made progress, and we've made great progress. We've gotten, we've gotten over a number of hurdles. Everything's been, we don't have any performance standards. We may give up on those for the moment. But what we do have is we have our agreement on the schedule of land uses. And, uh, which was no small feat. But the one sticking point is the issue of animal husbandry. I think from a performance standard point of view, that's this board's job, that's not that committee's job, or, or, then we got some more work to do. Uh, we probably will not make June meeting for them unless we.
We're not gonna make June meeting if we let that committee decide on the damage. We're not gonna make.
By June of twenty twenty.
Totally agree.
Twenty thirty.
Uh, well, where we are right now is we zoom in, our original intent was to deal with commercial animal husbandry. Because that's the issue. We, let's face reality, we got a farm, we've got an active farm right now. Mark Fannett's got an active farm. He wants to increase livestock production. That is his shtick, his livestock. He is not a grower of corn, alfalfa, or other fodder. What he is, is he's a, he's a livestock farmer. That's what he wants to continue doing, and he logs and all the rest of that. But the key issue here is he can't do it because the planning board and the town, a long time ago, uh, said you're limited in the residential districts to five animal units, which is five thousand pounds of animal. Doesn't specify what, it's conditional use, you have to get a permit from the planning board. Mark Fannett needed to get a permit from the planning board, put, what, three, three to five cows onto the new piece of land he had, had in pollards. We recognize that that's not, it worked very well, and that is actually a four-ember farm. It's a good idea that he'd be able to, he has enough acreage to be able to do an actual real commercial livestock farm, and he's committed to doing it, and he's, and the land's tied up forever. So, that's a good thing. There might be other parcels of land which people want to do livestock in a residential district, in areas, large pieces of land that haven't developed yet. So, we, the intent was to go and come up with a really simple system, simpler than what we proposed last year, which was a good system. You guys did well on that system, it's just was two pounds plus for a public. So, uh, but the committee has now kind of drifted over into focusing on family farms, which is everybody else. And, um, frankly, that's really kind of holding us up right now. So, we're arguing over that, and they want to make that a, a non, make it a permitted use so there's no regulation or no oversight of the applications.
Of the family farms.
Of the family farms, right.
Right, I was, I have one of those meetings.
Yeah, well, uh, and we're right now.
You guys want progress any further?
It's, it's, it's a generating downhill. Yeah, so, um, we have to, we need to put, do some broken field running at some point, so, um, we have a meeting next Thursday, and we, I would like the planning board to, to come if you want to. I have some handouts, if you want them. Um, showing what we proposed last time. I should give them a conference as well, I can make copies of that. But I will do that, send those to you. Um, but we appreciate you. Some input on this because, I mean, we have to come to some decisions. And right now, I, I don't know how the rest of the board is feeling, because we didn't change this, but they're feeling that we have to, we may have to just focus on the commercial livestock.
That, I think, uh, commercial, commercial was the first point.
Yep.
Per se. That was the way it was written.
Yep.
Okay, I think we should turn and take care of that first. It's simple, plain, but also do on your commercial. I haven't seen anything along the way, how they were talking about your residential. If you have so much livestock and everything else, you don't have any barge. Animal husbandry, I mean, you know, uh, well, everybody else is so safety-minded. I mean, uh, you know, you got fields, turn, I mean, uh, like Oliver's, you've cut all the trees down, but you got all the stumps and everything else in it too.
Apparently, DP meant to keep those there.
Okay. Have you been told that or is that just mouth?
No, I've been told that.
Well, let's put something in writing, because turn around, there are a lot of people speak out of their mouths in two different ways. And, and that's famous.
Well, I would say, and I, and I appreciate that, sir, um, I would, uh, I would agree that we should focus on the commercial.
You guys, if, if you want to focus on commercial, you have to show up next Thursday, because we're getting dragged into the, into the weeds of family farms.
Getting dragged?
We, we deep into the weeds now.
And they're also looking at making, and, and they're also looking at making a commercial farm, the farm, commercial livestock, minimum livestock's five acres.
Yeah, there is that as well.
Which frankly, I think is as well.
I was gonna say, various residential zones, right, is what you're saying.
We're, we're talking about commercial farms and residential zones.
I know, I'm just clarifying.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just reminding that to board.
Companies understand those, not mistake.
Residential and commercial.
Wait, they don't understand about streetlights or anything else either.
Uh-oh.
But they want sidewalks so people can take walks.
No, they don't want sidewalks.
Oh, well, what happened to the discussion? No, happily so, as far as I'm concerned. But I, I remember one discussion about sidewalks. I do support it, but I don't think sidewalks are the way to go. I support walking on the Eastern Trail. Yeah, I'll catch you later.
But that's, that's where we're at right now.
What else?
Okay.
I think I've covered all the bases.
We've pretty much, we've got to do.
No other landmines?
We've got to do something.
So, maybe we can just resolve to tussle the commercial farms first and get that resolved.
Three or four a day.
So.
We do, we do have a couple of other public hearings that will be up for. We looked at, well, you, most, I don't know how many of you were there. We looked at the issue of, uh, home, home occupations and the two, the two separate categories of them. Those are, those are done and good to go.
Well, that's good. Yeah.
Yep, so we got those two, and what?
We got time, we got ten o'clock.
I know.
Yep.
I'm turning into pumpkins.
Time to rock.
No, there's, there's.
They, they throw us out at ten o'clock.
I think absolutely.